Well, good afternoon, good evening everyone. How's everybody doing? Good. Today is Tuesday, May 2nd. I'm calling to order the City of Carson Housing Authority Success Asian and City Council Agenda. Ooh, ooh, the meeting is in session. Hello? Thank you. In accordance with Americans with Disabilities Act of 1990, if you require disability-related modification or accommodation to attend or participate in this meeting, including auxiliary aides or services, please call the City Clerk's office at (310) 952-1720 at least 48 hours prior to the meeting. The public may address the members of the City Council on any matters within the jurisdiction of the City Council or on any items on the agenda of the City Council during the designated public comment period. There will be two oral communication sessions, one for agendized items, that's comments on the agenda, and the other for non-agendized items. All communications of portion of agenda is limited to a duration of one hour unless otherwise approved by the City Council. You may view the council meeting via livestream at www.carsonca.gov or on YouTube, official YouTube site. Or you may view this meeting by cable TV on Spectrum Channel 35 and AT&amp;T Channel 99. If you are unable to attend the meeting in person, you may put your public comments in the mailbox. The white box is outside of City Hall. Or you can drop it off in the City Clerk's office prior to 3:00 PM on the day of the meeting. Madam Clerk, please.
Yes, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Dear. Councilmember Rojas.
Present.
Councilmember Hicks.
Present.
Mayor Protim Hilton. Mayor Davis Holmes.
Present.
One absent, Madam Mayor.
Okay. Is our pastor here? Our pastor Faith Hager will give in from the Metropolitan Church of Christ. Could you give us our invocation, please? I know you're just getting in. You can exhale.
Bad knees and long walk. Let us pray. Heavenly Father, oh God, we come before you now with gratitude. We thank you for being a God of love who is with us now in this very room. You have never left us nor forsaken us. Thank you for creating us in your own image with dignity and infinite worth. Father, you have commanded us to pray for all that are in authority. So we now pray for those in this grand hall. Therefore, I thank you for the City of Carson, the mayor, the duly elected officials, and all others. I know that this council's commission is to create laws and legislation so that the public, business, and private lives of this city might be prosperous and safe. And it is a grave and sometimes honorous endeavor. It is our hope that they will not become wearing well-doing, but will be successful stewards of the vineyard and harvests over which they have been entrusted. God, in your words, you made it clear your expectations for those who sit in places of authority. In Psalm 72, you say, "You endowed the king with your justice, that he may judge your people in righteousness and your afflicted ones with justice." In Jeremiah 22, you remind us that your blessing came on kings who defended the rights of the poor and needy, because that's what it means to know you. We are reminded by the Hebrew writer that those in authority are first and foremost your servants, that honoring you and doing your will is their highest purpose, that their power is given by you and that you never relinquish your right to take it away. Therefore, it behooves all those who sit in these seats of power and influence, whether they be politicians, public servants, police persons, or preachers, to remember that we will all stand before the judgment seat of God to answer for the things we have done, whether they are good or bad, sacrificial or self-serving, righteous or even ridiculous. And so we pray, oh heavenly Father, that you will be glorified this evening through the decisions of this City Council. And Lord, I thank you for the civil government, those who bear the sword, as the scriptures say, or their contemporary equivalent of badges and guns, that they do so as your ministers to be a territory crime. I pray that our civil servants would acknowledge this calling and perform it faithfully. Be with our judges, attorneys, and law enforcement, grant that they would never neglect or abuse their authority, but that they would stand firm for truth and justice. Emblazoned on many patrol cars is the slogan, "To Protect and Serve." Father, make it so that this slogan is not just written on panels of steel, but carved into the soft hearts of flesh of those men and women who adjudicate the law and carry out the statutes and judgments in real time with real people. Give their minds of fairness and love for all citizens regardless of race, religion, creed, or culture. For we have no desire for the citizen to fear their protectors, nor for the protectors to fear the citizens. So Father, keep us all safe from harm as we serve together to keep our community safe. And now may the grace of God and the spirit of peace rest on this council meeting tonight. Give the council members wisdom and guidance as they deliberate on the items set before them. May every decision be righteous in your sight for our benefit and for your glory. In the name of Jesus Christ, the matchless Lamb of God, our Lord and Savior, I pray. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor.
Pledge of Allegiance.
We're gonna do, yeah, the flag salute. I skipped over that. The woman.
Please rise. Right hand over your heart, ready to begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic over which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam City Clerk, I mean, Madam City Attorney, we don't have any closed session.
We don't.
We do not have any closed session items this evening. That is unusual. So to the audience, because our regularly scheduled meeting is scheduled to start at 6 o'clock, we're gonna break and we'll be back about 5:45, no later than 5:50. So if you could just bear with us for a few seconds, we'll be back out in about 35 minutes, okay? And I thank you guys for coming out this evening. All of our teachers and our union reps, thank you so much, but be patient with us. Thank you.
Could I have everyone's attention, please? We're gonna start the meeting. Where's my city attorney and where's the staff?
There's seven public organs on.
On. I'm gonna pull out 30 pointing out, we're gonna do that first. Madam City Attorney and staff, where are you?
I'm on the side.
First of all, let me thank everyone for... Thank you very much. We're gonna deviate from the agenda for just a moment, and then I'm gonna go and do presentations, so bear with me. There is item number... Item number 29, I'm bringing forward, and before we... Before I start the tape, I want to say that to the ladies here in the audience, and to all of our minority, our different ethnic groups here in the city, of course, and I represent each and every one of you, and when I am reminded of someone's action, I need to bring it to everyone's attention. So without... And then after you see the tape, if you look at item number 29, we talked about when our former city clerk was censored. We talk about the disrespect of women, and I did a resolution to that effect, and I think it's just appropriate for you to see what your mayor has had to endure. And it's not fair, and I always stand up and fight for what I believe in. So I'd like you to roll the tape, please.
That's nasty. You're a nasty lady. Very nasty. You are, you're a nasty lady, because you're lying, and you're disingenuous, and I pity you. I laugh at you, because you look foolish, saying things that are so untrue. Agenda in the future. I've asked for the zoning ordinance for a year, so maybe I'll keep asking this, and maybe we'll pray that we'll get this too. We'll get democracy back in Carson. Thank you.
Well, you know, I wasn't gonna say anything, because it's 10 o'clock at night. But I got a call, you know, when I was looking at the two Democratic Black Representatives that were removed from their position, Tennessee. They were banished, they've been reappointed, resigned. And I ran across, it came to me, I said, "What? This has a flashback or something for me." And it's... And I ran across this article, Dear's mute button uses as a Carson meeting violates the Brown Act. When you used to mute all of our residents here, you would mute your city council, and it says Carson Mayor on investigation after allegations that he used the mute button to stifle public comment.
That was all Robert Leslie.
In order to get it changed, the DA had to send a letter. The District Attorney's Office has warned Carson Mayor Jim Dear to stop using a mute button to silence public comments during city council meetings. I had a flashback when I looked at this, the two young men that are now boys. It says that on at least two occasions, Dear muted speakers because he did not like what they were saying. That sounds familiar. The latter goes on to say that his actions were unconstitutional and violated state law open meetings. The letter states, "The District Attorney's Office are not convinced that the use of the mute button to silence the broadcast of public comment is a least restricted means by which to accomplish important governmental interests in an orderly, effective decision." I just had a flashback when I saw those young gentlemen, that you had the opportunity, 12 years as the mayor of this city, to do something, and you did not. And so with that, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
That's nasty. You're a nasty lady. Very nasty. You are, you're a nasty lady, because you're lying, and you're disingenuous, and I pity you. I laugh at you, because you look foolish, saying things that are so untrue.
Thank you. Video for you to see, and for you to hear, because this is a substitute teacher, also did a resolution that I wanted my residents to know about, and it's entitled, "The Resolution, the City of Carson, California solemnly proclaiming the elimination of domestic violence against women and girls." Okay? We had to do this, and we, as women, as minorities, should not be subject to anything, anything. And I know the teachers are here this evening, and I apologize for this delay, but I thought it was important for you to see this video, and not only to see it, but this person was censored, and we thought he had changed his habits, and he has not. He was censored for... For... By 20 women in the city of Carson, for his abusive attitude. 20 of our employees came forward, and some have left, challenging that they were threatened, they were harassed, and they did not feel comfortable. A couple of our employees had identified escape routes. Escape routes because they feared for their safety. And I don't know, he can sit up here and call me a liar and everything he wants, but these documents don't lie, folks. A complete investigation was done. Not only had he insulted me when I first got on the council, he had the audacity to call me that B-I-T-C-H. It's in the newspaper. Okay? So when you're looking at him, and you're sending your children to school, understand that he has not... We thought he had changed, but that film with him calling me nasty, a woman, nasty, is an insult. It's an insult to women, it's an insult to various ethnic groups, it's an insult. And I will stand and fight for the residents of this city, all ethnic groups, male and female, because you should not be subject to this, and I will not allow my staff to be subject to this, the city staff. And so I know there's a couple of speakers on this item. Madam Clerk, do you have any speaker cards?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have just letters, no public con...
You have a letter from the National Action Network, known as Justice No Peace?
Yes, Madam Mayor.
Could you read it, please?
To Carson City Council, during the April 18 council meeting, Councilmember Jim Dear called the mayor of Carson ugly. This is very degrading and unprofessional actions. This in no way to describe any human being, much less the city of Carson's first female Black mayor. Councilmember Dear's use of terminology ugly is disrespectful and shameful on any level. However, it is particularly troublesome when used to refer to a Black woman in a professional setting. For years, Black women have been subjected to hidden code language designed to diminish their accomplishments and success. The city of Carson has no room for such language and political pandering. As out of city flourishes, excuse me, as our city flourishes and advances, please be mindful of the language that is used as you represent our community members and the elected officials who serve our community members. Sincerely, National Action Network of Los Angeles Policy Director, Rashida Kilpatrick.
You have speaker cards.
Madam Mayor, I have speaker cards for other agenda items, unless Ms. Huff's isn't labeled. I don't know where. I'm sorry. It's for this item, Madam Mayor.
You are, you're a nasty lady. Because you're lying and you're disingenuous. And I pity you. I laugh at you because you look foolish saying things that are so untrue. I've asked for the zoning ordinance for a year, so maybe I'll keep asking this and maybe we'll pray that we'll get this too. We'll get democracy back in Carson. Thank you.
Well, you know, I wasn't gonna say anything because it's 10 o'clock at night. But I got a call, you know, when I was looking at the two Democratic Black Representatives that were removed from their position. Tennessee. They were banished. They've been reappointed. And I ran across, it came to me, I said, "What? This has a flashback or something for me." And it's... And I ran across this article. Dear's mute button uses as a Carson meeting violates the Brown Act. When you used to mute all of our residents here, you would mute your city council. And it says Carson Mayor on investigation after allegations that he used the mute button to stifle public comment.
That was all Robert Leslie.
In order to get it changed, the DA had to send a letter. The District Attorney's Office has warned Carson Mayor Jim Dear to stop using a mute button to silence public comments during city council meetings. I had a flashback when I looked at this. The two young men that are now boys. It says that on at least two occasions, Dear muted speakers because he did not like what they were saying. That sounds familiar. The letter goes on to say that his actions were unconstitutional and violated state law open meetings. The letter states, "The District Attorney's Office are not convinced that the use of the mute button to silence the broadcast of public comment is a least restricted means by which to accomplish important governmental interests in an orderly, effective decision." I just had a flashback when I saw those young gentlemen that you had the opportunity, 12 years as the mayor of this city, to do something and you did not. And so with that, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
That's nasty. You're a nasty lady. Very nasty. You are, you're a nasty lady. Because you're lying and you're disingenuous. And I pity you. I laugh at you because you look foolish saying things that are so untrue.
Thank you. Video for you to see and for you to hear. Because this is a substitute teacher. Also did a resolution that I wanted my residents to know about. And it's entitled, "The Resolution, the City of Carson, California, Solely Proclaiming the Elimination of Domestic Violence Against Women and Girls." Okay? We had to do this. And we, as women, as minorities, should not be subject to anything, anything. And I know the teachers are here this evening, and I apologize for this delay. But I thought it was important for you to see this video. And not only to see it, but this person was censored. And we thought he had changed his habits, and he has not. He was censored for... For... By 20 women in the city of Carson for his abusive attitude. 20 of our employees came forward. And some have left, challenging that... They were threatened, they were harassed, and they did not feel comfortable. A couple of our employees had identified escape routes. Escape routes because they feared for their safety. And I don't know, he can sit up here and call me a liar and everything he wants. But these documents don't lie, folks. A complete investigation was done. Not only had he insulted me when I first got on the council, he had the audacity to call me that B-I-T-C-H. It's in the newspaper. Okay? So when you're looking at him and you're sending your children to school, understand that he has not... We thought he had changed. But that film with him calling me nasty, a woman, nasty, is an insult. It's an insult to women, it's an insult to various ethnic groups, it's an insult. And I will stand and fight for the residents of this city, all ethnic groups, male and female, because you should not be subject to this. And I will not allow my staff to be subject to this, the city staff. And so I know there's a couple of speakers on this item. Madam Clerk, do you have any speaker cards?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have just letters, no public con...
You have a letter from the National Action Network, known as Justice No Peace?
Yes, Madam Mayor.
Could you read it, please?
To Carson City Council, during the April 18 council meeting, Councilmember Jim Dear called the mayor of Carson ugly. This is very degrading and unprofessional actions. This in no way to describe any human being, much less the city of Carson's first female Black mayor. Councilmember Dear's use of terminology ugly is disrespectful and shameful on any level. However, it is particularly troublesome when used to refer to a Black woman in a professional setting. For years, Black women have been subjected to hidden code language designed to diminish their accomplishments and success. The city of Carson has no room for such language and political pandering. As out of city flourishes... Excuse me, as our city flourishes and advances, please be mindful of the language that is used as you represent our community members and the elected officials who serve our community members. Sincerely, National Action Network of Los Angeles Policy Director Rashida Kilpatrick.
You have speaker cards.
Madam Mayor, I have speaker cards for other agenda items, unless Ms. Huff's isn't labeled. It's for this item, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Del Huff. I am a Carson resident since 1984. Put your microphone on. I'm sorry? Can you hear me now? Thank you. Good afternoon. I will rush. I know we only have a few moments. I have been a resident here since 1984. I was living here, I think, when the said councilperson began his charge, I should say, to become a councilperson. I have newspaper items as well, but I have been here and I have seen and heard some of the antics. And I call them that because they are like children's play, you know? Me, as a mother, I would have spanked or disciplined my child for some of those actions. While I do not agree with those names at all that have been used, I take them personally. Some years ago, we did what's called Bridge of Peace. And that's where we set it up. And all residents had the opportunity to cross that bridge and gain a new partner, not of their own background, but a new person. And most of us women who cross that bridge have maintained that friendship, not just with people that look like us, but the sisterhood in Carson is really pretty strong. We do not appreciate the names or the abuse that has been shelled out, I should say, at the hands of councilperson Dear. It is childish. We have lost, as it stated in the Daily Breeze that was printed, we have lost people from this city for our employment, our children, as well as us as adults have been abused. I liken this almost to human trafficking, where there may not be the same exact things, but there has been abuse. There has been harassment, that is violence. People have gotten ill because of some of those antics. And the sad part is, it has been known in Carson for years that this has taken place. It's been kind of swept up under the rug. We're not gonna say anything about it openly. Well, the newspapers. In October of 2015, Carson City Hall business was stalled because of an abusive clerk. He was then the clerk of the city of Carson. How much more of this are we gonna take? Would our other councilpeople, would any man stand for your wife being called out of her name like that? That's really what you have to think about. It's an attack on all of us as women. What is it teaching our young people that are here? Are they supposed to be exposed to that type of action? Nobody says anything, everybody...
Madam Mayor, that's three minutes.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Thank you. Councilwoman Hicks.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Can you guys hear me? In looking at that tape and actually witnessing it myself personally, it was appalling that that would take place and to call anyone out of their name. And to look at our first African-American female mayor is also detrimental to derogatory statements to that effect. But in looking at this report, I forgot that a lot of the things happened when I was an employee of this city. And that in this report of, you said, the 20, but 20-plus, I was one of the employees that was mentioned, who was actually harassed by then, at that point, was the mayor and then the city clerk. And then there's excerpt that's in the report that stated that the city clerk, Jim Dear, has in his opinion of the city council violated Carson Code of Ethics, Principle Number Three, "By engaging in conduct unbecoming an elected official in the city of Carson as manifest in his disparaging of city staff and public, including repeatedly referencing to other elected officials as stupid, incompetent, unprofessional, a liar, corrupt, or even evil, referring to management staff using demeaning terms such as scumbag or a-hole, characterizing those who oppose his views crazy or psychotic, attempting to involve city staff in what his lawyers characterized as a rough and tumble of city politics, having temper tantrum threatening staffs for the loss of their job." I was that employee that was being threatened of his job. And it further goes on to say that the city manager at the time was Mr. Nelson Hernandez, is to terminate a Black department head, specifically because he is Black, directly interfering into the city manager's employment decisions, expressing his anger for the hiring of two female Black department heads. These are just excerpts of this actual report that was put out and how it actually delineates the attitude and the behavior of a person who does not respect individuals. My call is for greater respect. And if there is a code of conduct that this body is supposed to govern by, we need to act upon that and make sure that all of us, not just one or two, every elected official that's sitting up on this desk is going by that code of ethics. So for individuals to have to feel that they cannot express themselves... And you know what? Everybody has their own opinion. We know that. But there's a way to have, it's called, when you're debating back and forth versus someone's opinion versus back and forth. I myself would not want to have my daughters, and I have two daughters and my wife, to be treated or talked to that way. And I'm looking at the young ladies that are here in this audience. I know we have the women's basketball. And there's things that, as a female, I did not want them to feel threatened. Because as you go through life, there's gonna be trepidations, there're gonna be trials, and people are gonna challenge you at every step of the way. But I just hope at some point in time, we can come at this body and not use derogatory terms in calling people out of their name while we're sitting up on this desk. This is not what it's for. That's what you do back on the streets back in when you were a kid. But you don't do that when you're an adult, supposedly. But you know what? When you say you're an adult, I say that's subjective because that may be whatever age you may think it is. But if you are at an age over 60, I think you're grown to know what the difference is.
Thank you. I'm gonna go down to presentations. We'll resume this item. But I did want my audience to see this, so we'll do presentations now.
Madam Mayor, before you do that, I have a statement to make.
We will do presentations. I'll hear your statement after.
Thank you very much. Okay. I will be the adult in the room, and I am not going to comment on false statements. This is the kickoff of her reelection campaign. And you can see she's gonna run a very nasty campaign as a candidate. Because this is an inappropriate location, the council chambers, to conduct this type of smear campaign. So I categorically deny all of these false statements, and I'll leave it at that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And that tape doesn't lie. Let's go down and do presentations. That tape does not lie. I need a mic. Well, good afternoon, good afternoon. Good evening. I'm sorry. Good evening. This is Teacher Appreciation Week. All of our teachers here? Okay. I know the girls' basketball team is here. We have certificates of appreciation, and I won't read them all. But we'll call your names. So when I call your name, could you come up? It's a certificate of appreciation from the city of Carson to Grace Cowan. Are you here, Grace? 232nd Place School and esteem magnet. In Cecilia's appreciation for your outstanding dedication and countless contributions in shaping the lives of your students and future generations of the great city of Carson. Thank you for your diligence and hard work as an educator to help our children succeed in school and in life. Best wishes from a proud city as dated today, May 2nd, signed by your Mayor Lula Davis Holmes. Mayor Pro Tim Hilton over here. I'm looking, I was looking. What are you doing over here? Councilmember Dear, Councilmember Cedric Hicks, and our Councilwoman Arlene Rojas.
Thank you.
And what I'm gonna do... I wanna call up all the teachers after she makes her comment, and then we'll take a photo and we'll hear. How many do we have on that list? Andrew Carnegie Middle School, Ms. Jaclyn Caldera. Are you here? Nolly Avenue School, Emily Barbie. Broad Acres Avenue School, come on up. Is she over there? Broad Acres. Ursula Martin. Ursula Martin. Come on up. Well, come on, Anitra. Come on. Oh, Anitra Flynn. California Academy of Science and Math. First name is Cheryl... Is this flipped? Cheryl Carnegie James Galero. James. It is. Caradale Learning City, Martha Nielsen. Carson Christian School, Sean Ratcliffe. Carson Street School, Helen Rodriguez. Hill School, Dana Madril. Madricle, Madricle, I'm sorry. Curtis Middle School, Lindsey Hartwitz. Delamo Elementary, Toh Mini. Dominguez Elementary School, Francisca Andrade. Magnolia Science Academy, Kelly Clinton. Rancho Dominguez Prep, Dr. Greta Vera Vera. Christine? Christine Gayton, are you here? What school? Anita, Martha Nielsen, Caradale. Jennifer Woodruff, Ambler. Martha, are you here? Nielsen? Martha? You're not here? Well, from your mayor, I want to say, thank you for all that you do for our students. When they leave home, we turn them over to you. And your colleagues nominated you because they think you're doing... They know that you're doing an exceptional job. And our children are better off because we are back in session. We're back in the classroom. And we're back learning again. So from your mayor, I would just wanna say, thank you from the bottom of my heart. It's Teacher Appreciation Week. And I just wanted to let you know how much we here in the city of Carson do appreciate all that you do. Your work does not go unnoticed, and you're underpaid, as far as I'm concerned. But I have no control over there. So I know that the teachers, the students that you're teaching, are the future leaders of tomorrow. So thank you for investing in them and thanking you for loving your job. You have to love your job. You must love your job. And I can see from your nominations that you guys are the best of the best. And guess what? You're in the great city of Carson, so you have to be the best of the best. So? Would anyone like to say a few words? Where is she? She did... Well, we'll do a photo op. No, they don't wanna... Oh, well, can I get one of the principals up? Come on, principal. I'm looking right at you. Ms. Martin, come down and say a few words, please. Yes. Come down. She's homegrown, from Carson. Ms. Martin.
Well, good evening, everyone. And congratulations to all of the honorees today. We are so, so proud of you because we know it is hard work. Isn't it hard work, everyone? The work that you do, day in and day out, it goes noticed. Not unnoticed, it goes noticed. And that is why you're here today. We so appreciate the work that you do for our scholars every day, and we appreciate you. That is why I know you took the time to celebrate these honorees today. So thank you from the bottom of our hearts. Thank you so much.
We'll do a photo op, so we have to scoot in like we love each other, and we do. Follow the photographers' instructions. This is about you. But all of our, following the instructions of the mayor. Come on up so we can see you. Come on. I can't see you back there. And I'm not trying to put you in front of me, I wanna be seen. Can you see everyone? Thank you. Thank you. Are any of the principals, can we get a photo with the principals? All principals, come down and take a photo, please. Hi, darling. How are you? You're welcome. Thank you. Thank you, Mike. Thank you. All principals, come down for a photo op. Okay. I'm good. All principals, yeah, you should. All principals, we love you. Come on down. Yes. Thank you. Thank you. Asian Amer... Our next presentation will be for Asian American Pacific. Asian American Pacific, our Councilwoman will do that presentation.
Thank you. I'm... This is great to be following Teachers Appreciation Week to recognize Asian American and Pacific Islander... Islander Heritage Month. Yes, thank you so much. And it, yes, thank you. It just so happens that my two recipients are also teachers, they're actually principals here in the city of Carson. So, I will read the proclamation first. Does the City of Carson Proclamation, recognizing the month of May as Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month, whereas Americans who trace their ancestry to Asian and Pacific Islanders have contributed much to the city of Carson. We celebrate the achievements and contributions of Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders that enrich our history, society, and culture. Asian American and Pacific Islanders have made our city better with their talents, hard work, values, and their commitment to family that has helped shape and strengthen our community. Asian American Pacific Islanders have enriched our society, excelling in many fields including education, business, science, technology, government, sports, and the arts. We honor those Asian American Pacific Islanders who have served in our armed forces. Anybody here in the armed forces, thank you for your service. We incur, we, with courage and honor in their efforts to make America more secure and bring freedom to people around the world. Today, more than 20 million Asian American Pacific Islanders live in the United States and throughout their actions make America a more vibrant, prosperous, and secure nation. As we celebrate Asian American Pacific Islander Month, we are reminded of the richness of the Asians and Pacific cultures and how it enhances the American experience and greatly contributes to our city's legacy of diversity. And everyone here knows in the city of Carson, we are a diverse city. So, I chose two, two recipients for this, and I would like to read their biography because I think it is important and to show the contributions that they have to the city of Carson. So, the first one, Diana Fatai, she is the principal of Carson High School. Thank you, thank you. Studying math and literature and playing sports, she immersed, immersely in the rich culture of the islands, speaking only the Samoan language, wearing traditional clothing, and following Samoan family dynamics of respect and obedience. Most importantly, her parents set an example of a strong work ethic. Her father worked 10 miles every day to work at the car wash, and her mother labored long hours at a factory for less than a dollar an hour while pregnant with Fatai's younger brother. Both held their children to high standards in their schoolwork and instilled them in a philosophical approach to life summed up in three Samoan words. Two is to stand. Va'ai is to observe, and faolago, listen and obey. First, we stand up for our beliefs for others. Second, we observe needs before they arise, coming up with proactive solutions. Finally, faolago means, reminds us to listen for God's voice and obey Him. These simple but profound words guided Fatai through her education and to her career as a teacher and administrator in the Los Angeles Unified School District, and today she is our principal at Carson High School. So, yes, thank you for that. Now, she is, she's not here because she, there is a game, Carson High School has a game, so she is devoting her time to Carson High School, but we have her son here and her husband as well, Pastor. Come on up, no, you gotta come on up. Thank you, yes. And that is important because even though she is busy with our children, her family, like she has learned, is here to represent her and back her up, right? So, thank you, thank you. So, we have another one, and I'll read. There you go. Thank you, what a gentleman, right? Okay, the second recipient is the vice principal of Carson High School, and her name is Gemma Ribomontan Kyuna. She's a proud resident of the city of Carson. Her father, the late Dr. Cassiano Ribomontan, was the first Filipino dentist to establish his dental practice in Carson back in the late 1970s. Because of her father working in Carson, Gemma did Carson Elementary, Stephen and White, and graduated from Carson High School in 1984. Gemma went on from, received her Bachelor of Science in Psychology with a minor in Chemistry at Cal State University, Long Beach. She earned her Master's Degree at Concordia University in Irvine. She's a proud alumnus of Carson High School, having moved up from being a student to a teacher, teaching every science class except physics, she says, to science department chairperson, to a data coordinator, to a Title I coordinator, and now she is our assistant principal. She is the first Filipina assistant principal in the history of the city of Carson. She has two beautiful kids, Reese and Jillian, who are also alumnis from Long Beach, and she is very proud of her children. And her and Diana Fatai, her new boss, was one of her coordinators that worked under her. Together, they are both class of 1984 Carson High School. They are now our principal and vice principal, and I am also proud to say, I'm also a graduate of Carson High School, 1984, yes!
I wasn't.
He did not graduate in 84. You graduated in 2024. Yeah, so Gemma, please come up. Where is she? I see her back, there she is, thank you! So, very important that in the 80s, as a student, and you are now one of the leaders in our community as vice principal, and thank you for representing the Asian American Pacific Islander ethnicity groups, and we are gonna celebrate. So, yes, thank you. Would you like to say?
Well, sorry that my mom could not be here. Dr. Fatias, Ms. Rojas said, is taking care of some business at Carson High School, but she does, she's very thankful for this award and just being able to represent. As her biography said, she is very big on where she comes from, and she, this reward is sort of a representation of that. So, she's very thankful, and she accepts, she accepts this award.
Yes, thank you. Proud resident of Carson, and even prouder Carson Colt. Thank you, guys.
Congratulations, you guys are doing a phenomenal job there. Tell your mom, we missed her, we're so proud of you, and so proud of you, young man, also. And to hubby, it's nice to have a hubby by your side. Thank you. The girls' basketball team, where is it?
Oh, they can all stand in the back because they're way taller.
Caitlin Cole here. Coach Cole is- First of all, Coach, where is he? Come on.
I know I'm young, but I am a coach.
You're the coach, oh! They keep saying, this is a coach.
I am, and then-
Both are. But you called me first, so I guess I'm better.
I am so proud of this team. You guys have done, yeah, I'm an alumni of Cal State University Dominguez Hills. And yes, I am a Toro, graduate and undergraduate, but these ladies, under the leadership of this coach, and this is your assistant?
No, he's ahead, but-
He's ahead?
I take it.
She does the work.
You do the work?
I do the grunt work.
It's a certificate of recognition to Caitlin Cole in recognition of your years of leadership and commitment to support, to promote sportsmanship as a coach to the Cal State University Dominguez Hills Women's Basketball Team. Congratulations on your team's historic run to the NC2A Division II Elite Eight, ranking number four nationally, and your victory as West Region Champions and winning the California Collegiate Athletic Association Title. The city of Carson is proud of, of your accomplishments and wishing you many, many more continued years of success. So, I can say, "Go Toros!" Is signed today, May 2nd, is dated by your Mayor, Lula Davis-Homes, Mayor Pro Tim Jawan Hilton, Councilman Cedric Hicks, Councilman Dear, and Councilwoman Rojas. Thank you, job well done. Now, we're gonna, now we're gonna call off the young ladies. Dejana Polen. Is it Dejana? Kelsey Bell. Kelsey, Kelsey? Oh, hi, Kelsey. Asia Jordan. Aleah Carton-Nate Gina. Danielle Booker. Karia Johnson, Karia Johnson? Kiara, hi, Kiara. Rebecca Penner. And, well, they say you're the head coach. It says in recognition of your years of leadership and commitment to promote sportsmanship as a coach to the Cal State University Dominguez Hills Women's Basketball Team. Congratulations, your team's historic run to the NC2A Division II Elite Eight, ranking number four nationally, and your victory as West Region Champions and winning the California Collegiate Athletic Association Title. The city of Carson is proud of your accomplishments, and we wanna see you back here next year. Signed by all of us. And to the girls, your certificate reads, "In recognition of your years of leadership and commitment to promote," oh, that's the wrong one, isn't it? To promote sportsmanship, they're not the coach. Good. Ladies, somebody did a typo here. So, we're gonna improvise. Ladies, we are so proud of you, what you've done. They didn't do it while I was attending, so give them a round of applause. Job well done. In order to be on the team, you have to get, have a good GPA, right? That makes me even prouder. You cannot play sports without having, without having a good GPA. So, that is number one. So, thanks again from a grateful city, and we're gonna take a brief photo. Coach, would you like to say, which one of the coaches wanna say something?
We just wanna say, thank you guys all for your support all year. These young women put on, not only for the university, but for the city of Carson, and to, to be a top eight team in the entire country, and then to start next season, being at number five is a huge recognition to all of their hard work. And so, and that's the athlete part of the student athlete. This team has also raised, raised the bar academically for our university and for our program. They average cumulative 3.2 GPA. And just to say something, it's a 3.2. They take academics just as serious as they, as they do with the sport. So, thank you guys all again, we appreciate it.
We could come, can they go down?
Yes.
Yeah, can they kneel?
Oh, we'll have them come.
Yeah. Can you take it all? Thank you.
Double X, when you come by, well, I got you, I got you, I'll make sure to take care of you. Thank you.
Excuse me, next we're gonna have a certificate of recognition for our small business, Uncle Daryl. Come on down.
He didn't bring no food with him? Congratulations.
Thank you so much, guys. Thank you.
You're welcome. Whereas, this is a proclamation recognized on April 30th through May 6th as Small Business Week. Whereas the entrepreneurial spirit is defining quality of our city, which time and again has lifted us to new heights and carried us through our greatest challenges. Small businesses are not only the engine, I want to say that again, the engine of our economic progress in Carson. They are the heart and soul of our community. During National Small Business Week, we celebrate our small businesses, the pillars of their neighborhoods, and whereas when the COVID-19 pandemic first struck in 2020, it posed a historic challenges to America's small businesses from coast to coast, in big cities, small towns, rural enclaves, and tribal communities. Small business owners and workers demonstrated remarkable courage and resilience, adapting to sudden changes in our way of life and stepping up to serve their communities. Across the country, small businesses extended helping hands to their neighbors during the pandemic's darkest hours, all while entrepreneurs and employees worked tirelessly around the clock to keep their businesses afloat and make payroll, ensure the safety of their teams and customers. And whereas to ensure that these cities, these community pillars have a fighting chance to reopen and stay open, the city of Carson is providing grants in support of our small businesses, which I think you are recipients. Whereas, in partnership with the Innovation Incubator at Cal State University Dominguez Hills, the Small Business Growth Academy is available free to elevate and empower locally-owned businesses in the city of Carson. To all the small businesses out there, that's a program that I started some time ago. It graduated 13 small businesses, and now I think in the class right now today, there's 35 small businesses going through the university. So this was in partnership with Cal State University Dominguez Hills because we wanted to do something to make an impact, a positive impact, on our small businesses here in the city of Carson. And whereas our city's small business define our community, drive innovation, and create the products and services that enrich our lives to build a better and more sustainable city by harnessing the power of our small businesses and equipping our entrepreneurs with the tools and resources they need to innovate, adapt, and grow our economy will continue to build back than ever before. Now therefore, the mayor and the city of Carson do hereby proclaim April 30th, May 6, 2023, as Small Business Week and call upon all our residents to recognize the contributions of small businesses, to continue to support them, and honor the occasions with programs and activities that highlight these and small businesses. We appreciate our small business, and this is Uncle Darryl. Would you like to have a few words?
Yes. Good evening. I am humbled to stand before these giants of men and women. Being a first-generation family business, it can go either way. And we were in Marina Del Rey, also Mid-City, but we never got the support of a city like we're getting here from Carson. And these folks right here have been a great lifeline for us. During the pandemic, our place was shuttered for three months. We had the opportunity of feeding 87,000 meals to seniors who were sheltered in place with comorbidities. And because of the city, they allowed us to do that. And most times, we don't realize that life is more than just business. It's about relationships. And I can truly say, standing before all of you, that these group of men and women here have been an amazing support system for us. Not only them, but you as well. Coming to Carson, we had no idea how we'd be received. Never wanted to be a carpetbagger, never wanted to come in here and extract resources, and never put something back into the system. And from this relationship, it's been symbiotic relationship. It's been one that's been based upon integrity, it's one that's been based on trust and a commitment to businesses like ours. And I want to thank all of you out there and all the beautiful men and women standing here for allowing us to come into your city and represent it to the best of our ability. And we love you more than you love us, and there's nothing you can do about it.
We love you. Well, give them your address and name of your...
We are right across the street, right next to Dog House and IHOP, so we only open Thursdays through Sundays, abbreviated hours. We're looking for people to work. We can't, we're running a full-time business, part-time with full-time expenses. So we desperately need to get some cooks in there. So if anybody who loves or have a passion for the food industry, please see us. Again, Thursdays through Sundays from noon until 7:00. So any loved ones, we're looking, desperately looking.
And the food is good, okay? The food is very good. Thank you. Thank you. Our next proclamation is gonna be presented by Councilman Hicks, Mental Health Awareness. And I just want to say, the councilman held a conference Saturday.
Saturday.
That was excellent, and it addressed the concerns of our residents, and I think it had over 140 participants, numerous vendors, so job well done.
Also from Cal State University Dominguez Hills, fellow Toro. Thank you. The month of May is Mental Health Awareness Month, and in the city of Carson, we did have any health fair that was this past Saturday, with roughly about 175 participants that showed up, and we had over 28 vendors that actually was able to give information out of regarding health concerns, autism, if you had Alzheimer's, if you had anything with a sickle cell. We had a lot of information for diabetes. So look forward for next year. We hope to grow it even larger than it was last year. I'm glad that all my colleagues were able to show up. I know that he had other things to do that day because he was all over the place, but to the staff, you guys did an outstanding job. With that being said, whereas mental health conditions are a leading cause of disabilities in the United States and affects millions of children, adolescents, and adults in California. And whereas mental health illness includes such conditions as schizophrenia, depression, anxiety, and post-traumatic stress disorder. And whereas millions of adults and children are disabled by mental illness every year, only one out of two people with a serious form of mental illness seek treatment for his or her mental illness. Whereas mental illness affects almost every family in America, people with mental illness recovery is given to the necessary services and support of their communities. Whereas stigma and fear and discrimination keep many who would benefit from mental health services from seeking help. Research shows that the most effective way to reduce stigma is through personal contact with someone with a mental illness. Whereas during Mental Health Awareness Month, we recognize those Americans who live with mental illness and substance use disorders, and we pledge solidarity with their families who need our support. And whereas during Mental Health Month, we strive to ensure that people living with mental health conditions know that they are not alone, that hope exists, and that the possibility of healing and thriving is real. Whereas greater public awareness about mental illness can change negative attitudes and behavior towards people with mental illness. Whereas during Mental Health Awareness Month, together, we can help everyone get the support they need to recover as they continue along their journey to get well. Now therefore be resolved that the mayor and the city council of Carson, California, hereby proclaim the month of May as Mental Health Awareness Month. The city of Carson joins the state and the entire nation in raising awareness about mental health issues and services, sharing personal knowledge and experience of what living with mental illness means, helping to reduce the barriers and stigma associated with individuals seeking mental health treatment to live a longer, healthier life. Dated today, the second day of May 2023, and signed by entire city council and attested by our city clerk, Dr. Kalia Bradshaw.
Thank you.
I say a few words?
Yes, my name is Dr. Dennis Sanchez, and I'm the Director of Psychological Services at Cal State Dominguez Hills. And it is our passion and our effort to keep our community healthy, and that's what the green ribbon means, mental health awareness, reducing stigma, helping our students stay healthy during those times of stress. And it's a pleasure to be here, and thank you to council member Hicks for being such a supporter of our campus and mental health.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Another representative from Cal State University Dominguez Hills, the best kept secret in the South Bay. Go Toros. Thank you so much. Our last, is this our last one? We'll be presented by MPT, Proclamation Recognizing Professional Municipal Clerks Week.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Our city clerk, Dr. Kalia Bradshaw, and the city staff that works in our office, would you come? So, a proclamation in recognition of the 54th Annual Professional Municipal Clerk Week, April 30th through May 6, 2023. All don't rush up here. Whereas the office of municipal clerks, a time-honored vital part of local government exists throughout the world, and whereas the office of the municipal clerk is the oldest among public servants, and the office of the municipal clerk provides professional links between the citizens, the local government bodies and agencies of government at other levels, and whereas municipal clerks have pledged to be ever mindful of their neutrality and impartiality, rendering equal service to all. And whereas the municipal clerk serves as the information center on functions of local government and community, and whereas municipal clerks continually strive to improve administration of the affairs of the office and the municipal clerk through participation in education programs, seminars, workshops, and annual meetings of their state, providential, county, and international professional organizations, and whereas it's most appropriate that we recognize the accomplishments of the office of the municipal clerk. Now therefore, the mayor and the city council of Carson, that's the good part when it comes up and says "now therefore," that means it's coming to an end. California, do hereby recognize the week of April 30th through May 6th as Municipal Clerks Week, and further extend appreciation to our municipal clerk, Dr. Kalia Bradshaw. And to all the municipal clerks for their vital services they perform and their exemplary dedication to the communities that they represent. Dated this day, the second day of May 2023, I give you Dr. Kalia Bradshaw.
Thank you, MPT. Thank you very much. Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. Mayor Pro Tem, I appreciate you reading that in detail. I am honored to be here. Obviously, I have to be here, we're at a city council meeting. But I'm really honored that my team is here, and we are committed to the work, we're committed to transparency, we're committed to being available to you all. I see a lot of familiar faces, you all obviously know how to find us. And really, we appreciate being of service to the community, as he read in the proclamation, that is the role of the job. So we do really take your concerns, we take your comments and your feedback very seriously, and we're open to that, that is literally the role of the job. So I am honored to serve as your city clerk, I appreciate your support so far, and I love my team, I have the best staff ever. And I would not be able to be the, I would not be able to be the city clerk that I am without my team. We really, really do work, we work amazing together. But we work tirelessly to really have our office be the best outfitting city clerk office that it can be for the city. You all definitely deserve it, and we're really honored to serve you. So thank you for all of your work. It's actually been a little bit of a hectic week with the move and everything, so I really do appreciate you all. And thank you so much to mayor and council, and so, thank you.
Thank you, thank you. That concludes the presentations. I'm gonna move up item 19, because you guys have been so patient. Just thank you so much. Oh, DSA signage is here? Where is he? DSA signage, you're here? Come on down. DSA signage, somebody has your certificate locked up. How are you? So, what's your name?
Sho.
Sho?
Brian.
Brian. Brian, why don't you give us a little information about your company? You're, they're located here in the city of Carson, and one of our businesses. So we want to let the residents know about what your business is all about, and then we will personally deliver your, it is? Oh. Oh, it's a certificate of recognition, it's a serious appreciation for your ongoing partnership with the city of Carson and giving back to the community and making a positive impact on the lives of the many people through your generous donation, wishing your business continued success. And it's signed by all of us on the city council, just to say thank you.
Thank you so much, Madam Mayor. My name is Sho, very nice meeting you all. Excuse me. The name of our business is DSA signage. We've been around for 50 years, and 20-plus years in the city of Carson. We just relocated to a new facility in Rancho Dominguez, which is still part of this. Thank you, everybody here who helped us with all our permits, getting the building up and running, we appreciate it. We employ about six or so individuals from the surrounding areas. We are proud of being a certified minority-owned business, and try our best to make sure every layer of our company is layered with diverse candidates. And we also offer internship programs to make sure we can employ from within and help the younger generation in Carson, Compton, get into the workforce and grow. If there is anything we can do, we'd love to be a part of it. We are a national company, but happen to be headquartered in Carson.
Thank you. Thank you. So we're gonna do a mock certificate, we will get you your other one to you.
No worries.
No worries.
We see you guys all the time, so no worries. Thank you.
Thank you, congratulations, thank you so much. Ooh, that was a lot. We're gonna move to item number 19, because our brothers and sisters have been waiting since 5 o'clock, they were here early. So I want to let you know, we didn't recognize the fact that you were here, and I do appreciate it. So the next item, number 19, is, it's on the consent calendar, but I want to pull it because it's considered a resolution condemning construction, industry, labor laws violations to the staff. Robert? Yes?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, for item number 19. This item is on the agenda at your request to transmit... This item is on the agenda at your request to transmit a resolution for the city council consideration to formally condemn construction industry labor law violations. Violation of wage and hour income tax, employment tax, discrimination, safety, and workers' compensation laws are an issue of major concern in the construction industry. The construction industry in the state of California features an extensive underground sector in which workers are misclassified as independent contractors are paid in cash off the books, denying the public necessary tax revenues and denying workers the protection of wage and hour laws. This has been referred to as construction's underground economy. While this has long been in case in single-family residential construction and renovation, today this form of workplace fraud has penetrated the largest commercial construction sites in California. A study from the Los Angeles-based Economic Roundtable found that more than 143,000 jobs, or one out of every six jobs in California's 152 billion construction industry, were part of the so-called underground economy in 2011. Of those 104,000 jobs were unreported by employers and more than 39,000 employees were misclassified as independent contractors. Adoption of this resolution affirms the commitment of the city council to condemn such construction industry labor law violations. That concludes staff's report. Madam Mayor.
Thank you so much. I see some labor big bosses here. Could you come to the podium, please? Mr. De, who? Ray, Mr. Diaz, Mr. Turner? No? Yes, we just want to hear from you and just to let you know that the city council stands with you and that we're committed, and this resolution kind of sums that up.
Thank you, Madam Chair, city council members, staff, and my sisters and brothers in the labor movement, and those that we represent that do not have a voice, that are not represented. We stand here for them as well. I'm a 36-year resident of Carson and very proud to be a Teamster for 44 years, representing the workforce out here that is represented, that do have a voice. As my sisters and brothers that are here, standing with me, shoulder to shoulder, we don't want you to discuss it. We urge that you vote on this resolution and pass it unanimously this evening. As our city manager read into the record, you know exactly what this resolution stands for. It also establishes the policy of the city for qualifying project work as exclusively to contractors who agree to be bound by the PLA and require each of their subcontractors to be bound by that. With the Los Angeles Orange County Building and Construction Trades Council that we are all a part of, this is long overdue in our city. I think that this has greater implications regionally and nationally, but I am proud to be a resident of Carson and to see this resolution passed unanimously this evening. So, I urge you to, again, pass this. And also, I'd like to acknowledge two of our council members that belong to the union, Jim Dear and Arlene Rojas, I believe are part of the union. But again, we want all the city to stand in favor of wage theft, to denounce what's going on, and not to allow this to permeate or continue or to be allowed in our city. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and honorable council members. My name is Ray Lawson. I'm with the Southwest Mountain State Regional Council of Carpenters, the carpenters' union. You can see here our brothers and sisters. We brought our family members. Hey, when we talk about tax fraud and misclassification of workers that go on in the city of Carson, that affects families, that affects taxes, that affects EMT, the police services, the teachers that were just honored here, because the taxes are not paid. So, that affects the city being able to get these taxes, to take care of these services for the city. So, we feel that, and we are in support of this resolution passing just for that reason on the strength of that. We know it's a homeless problem throughout Southern California, through the state of California, and in our desire to solve that homeless problem, we, affordable housing coming in and so forth, but a lot of the projects that are slated to go forth in Carson and throughout Southern California, we have to really look at that as far as wage theft, as far as tax fraud, because in that will to solve that problem, it causes other problems. It causes problems like wage theft. It causes contractors that are shady, that are not credible. So, we urge that this resolution will look into that, will have transparency, will have accountability with these contractors that will be doing this work, that they have prevailing wage language in it, that they have apprenticeship languages in it. Hey, we, some of our members that live right here in Carson, they brought their family here tonight, they're apprentice, they have apprenticeship programs. They're going, one day they're going to journey out, they're going to be able to buy a home in Carson. They're going to be able to live successfully, middle income like a city in Carson. But we have to have these protections in place to see that this happens. So, that's why we're here in support of this resolution, that it gets passed, that it protects the industry, it protects the people that work here, and also the people that are going to be doing the work for the future. So, that's what we speak on, and thank you for your time in letting us speak.
Clerk, you have seen more speakers on this?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Javier Godino.
Good evening, Madam Mayor.
Good evening.
Members of the council. My name is Javier Godino. I'm from the Southwest Regional Mountain State Council of Carpenters, and I'm here in support of this resolution to hire a responsible union contractor that will pay us, a living, responsible that will pay us on-time our livable wage. And like Brother Ray Lawson said, so I've been through the four-year apprenticeship program, graduated. It's sustained me well. It's helped me out in life, and so, yeah, we're here in support. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Joseph Goldblatt?
Good evening. My name is Joseph Goldblatt. I just wanted to come up here and thank you all for everything you do and the service in the community here in Carson and the other cities, and just in support of item 19 as well. I'm here with my brothers and sisters as well, and want to thank you. Thank you for letting me come up.
Thank you.
Christine Austria Lozoya.
Hi, good evening. Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. A little shorty. Good evening, City Council and Mayor Davis Holmes. My name is Christine Austria Lozoya. I'm an 18-year member of IBW Local 11 Los Angeles. I don't, I don't want to get into, you know, the bullet points of everybody else because we all know why we're here, but I'm here for my testimonial. Like I said, I'm an 18-year member of IBW Local 11. I just wanted to say that me going through the apprenticeship, it has allowed me to have equal wages for my family and benefits. At one point, my husband was out of work and I alone sustained our household just with the wages that I've earned. You know, it provided me that apprenticeship would have continuous education, and we also reach out for these PLAs that have local hire veterans, disadvantaged workers, and of course, our local alone is reaching out to meet at least a 10% in women within our trade. So, I, again, I'm Christine Austria Lozoya, IBW Local 11 member, and I plead to you for your, to approve and adopt this resolution. And thank you for your valued time. And as a side note, I'm happy to witness the, I am of Filipino descent, Puerto Rican, and to, for you to recognize this month, it brought joy to my heart. Thank you.
Tommy Zilomski? Zilomski?
Hi, good evening, members of the city council and Mayor Davis Holmes. My name is Tommy Zilomski from the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers, Local 11 Los Angeles. We represent over 11,000 workers in the electrical industry and have about 2,000 apprentices, which happens to be one of the largest apprenticeship programs in the nation. Local 11 is here in strong support of your resolution number 2380 condemning the construction industry labor violations. The issue of non-union construction employers who violate labor laws are not just hurting the employees but also the community and state as a whole. When employers underpay, misclassify, or pay their employees under the table, they make it very hard, if not impossible, for law-abiding contractors to get the jobs because they are being underbid by these contractors who exploit their workers. They are also providing an untrained, unskilled workforce, which generally leads to unsafe conditions and a lackluster performance. The city of Carson is taking a significant and bold step to protect the construction industry with this resolution by making the construction industry a level playing field for responsible contractors to bid on private development. As an organizer with IBW Local 11, I visit non-union jobs where I speak to the underpaid and misclassified workers who often have no retirement benefits and usually pay for their own medical care. Most of these workers would love the opportunity to join the IBW, and we would love the opportunity to bring them into the union. But the only way that can happen is if we have the jobs and the work for them. We need these jobs because the union provides a path to the middle class. All workers deserve a livable wage and medical and retirement benefits. Thank you for recognizing this problem and taking action. Resolutions and PLA such as this help them make it possible for workers to join our union while they will be afforded a career, not just a job. Thank you again, and IBW strongly supports and hopes you pass this resolution. Thank you for your time.
Last but not least, Jordan Chekotell.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, city council members. My name is Jordan Chekotell, and I'm a member of Sheet Metal Workers Local 105, which represents over 6,000 workers across Los Angeles. This resolution goes beyond the construction. The resolution will add a lot to the city and will come to be a focal point across all of Los Angeles. The development of the future will look like this. It'll prioritize the worker and the community. Products of good jobs for skilled construction workforce and a, and a project that will uplift the whole community could ensure legal standards are met. Let's be clear tonight, the gold standard of development is a project that works for everyone around them. Most of all, for us, when we see 157 acres of houses, business, and community areas to be developed with the willingness to give to the community from the start with law-abiding responsible contractors involved is defined as a wholesome community development project. Developers who won't support the local skilled workforce in the city of Carson are far from hiring, far from hiring responsible contractors who pay living wages for the job. From that action, we all lose. Please support this resolution, and thank you very much for your time.
Madam Mayor, that concludes the speaking cards.
Okay, thank you, everyone, for coming out. I'd like to hear from my colleagues if you'd like to comment. MPT?
Yes, Madam Mayor, thank you so much. Thank you for placing this on the agenda. As the carpenters know, we stand with them, the Teamsters, IBW, sheet worker, sheet metal workers. This is a no-brainer. Carson is on the cusp of something great. We are developing, of course, the 157 acres, but in District 1 alone, there is $4 billion worth of infrastructure that has partnered with labor. All of these will be entered in with project labor agreements. So, this is a no-brainer for us to make sure that we have quality workers. Just a shout-out to the carpenters. Everybody has somebody that knows somebody who that knows somebody that's been in trouble before. A friend called and said he was coming home. I called Ray Lawson, and this gentleman called me just yesterday and told me that he's working on a union job and all of those things. So, this is wonderful. And the fact that the carpenters have invested, I believe, over $4 million into 1010 Sandhill, right? 48 million, 48 million. $48 million at 1010 Sandhill in the city of Carson, 90746, District 1, and area that trains workers to do infrastructure from the bottom up. This is a no-brainer for Carson. So, I'm excited and delighted, and I know I'm going to have all our colleagues get something to say, but this is a no-brainer for us to support this tonight because we know that projects like this keeps our, our community growing, keep those, keep food on the table, and keeps fair in union jobs, and makes sure that we have benefits and the quality of life. As Ray said, we want you to come back and buy a house in Carson if you don't already have one.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Councilman. So, here we go. We've got the Teamsters, IBW, sheet metal workers, many other unions, but right over there, who are we?
Carpenters!
Once again, who are we?
Carpenters!
All right, let's do this. Thank you. Councilman Hicks?
Thank you, ma'am. To my union, you know, to have livable wages and to have health benefits, you know, people think you're not supposed to have that. And I think that's one of the misnomers that are out there. Union, I love what you guys do. You make it happen. You come together as one to make sure that we're all taken care of. So, I stand with all unions. There's no questions about it, livable wages, health benefits. We must continue to fight to make sure that we have those in place. To all of you guys out there, don't give it up. If you need anything, I'm just a phone call away, and I'll make sure things happen up here.
Thank you. Councilman Dear?
Thank you. You've been here, what, maybe a couple hours, right? That being the case, to my brothers and sisters in organized labor, I move, we approve and adopt resolution number 23080 for the city of Carson tonight.
Second. Thank you. As you know, I put this on the agenda just to have you come out and let you know that the city supports you. But I've also, since we put this on the agenda, I wanted to let you know that our CR development, because a couple of you called me about the 157 acres, and currently it is not under a PLA, it's prevailing wage. But I have instructed our administrative executive team to meet with some of the leaders and myself to try and find a way to make all public infrastructure development projects subject to a PLA. So, we're going to be working on that, but I did want you to know because I've received a couple of calls, and we're going to try to figure out something, okay? So, it's been moved and properly second to my colleagues' cashier vote.
Madam Mayor, it's unanimous.
Goltarros, I'd like to get a group shot. We'll come down, or you can come up here. Then we'll take one on this side and one on my, to my right. So, stay right there for a moment. We're going to take a quick photo. She's going to come up. Can you join me down front, please?
Madam Mayor, as a point of privilege, thank you for agendizing this item this evening, and thank you, city council, for your unanimous vote and support and to consider and make the city of Carson a union town, labor town. And I also like to ask my brothers and sisters in the Teamsters household to rise. So, who are we? Teamsters! Who are we? Teamsters! Who are we? Teamsters! Thank you.
Miss Cooper? Miss Cooper? Can you tell her to move back? Look, your hair is lovely. Your hair is gorgeous. You wanna do everyone? Maybe you guys can circle instead of, so if we're gonna do one big shot, get in the chairs, yeah, get in the chairs and move back. So, gentlemen, so from here?
Thank you. We're gonna go back to our agenda. Next is presentations from Captain Jones. Are you here, Captain?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, entire counselor, our city manager, and entire staff. Just have a few updates for you guys this week regarding some of the activity our Carson Station has been up to since our last meeting. We partner, we had the pleasure of partnering with the community. As we all know, there's a substance abuse problem out in our community. Some of it is illegal drugs, but some of it stems from prescription drugs. So we had a prescription, as well as illegal drug, safe take-back event with the city early, I mean sometime last month. It was very successful, had a lot of people drop off drugs so they didn't get in the wrong hands. There was no questions asked, so we were happy to provide that resource and too to our city folks. We also had the pleasure sometime a couple, two weeks ago, along with many of you all, to go support our new business in our community, Starbucks, with their ribbon-cutting event. So we're happy to be out there with that ribbon-cutting event, and we're looking forward to doing some community reach-out and community partnership events with that, with them coming up. We had Administrative Professionals Day recognition. So as you know, everyone sees the tan and green deputies out there in the patrol cars, but in the behind-the-scenes, we have a whole bunch of administrative professional staff who help us be successful in providing quality law enforcement services to you all. So we made sure to recognize our staff. It was a great time, and they felt joy to be recognized and appreciated, so we were happy to do that for them. Our Community Relations Office participated in the Bonita Elementary Career Day. A lot of the kids, you know, they're so, you know, the good thing is, there's this narrative out there in society that people don't like law enforcement. You should see how happy and excited the kids were to interact with our deputies at the Career Day. So we're just happy about that, and the good thing is, we're explaining to them that we are their friends. So it was a good Career Day event, and we have many more coming up. This past weekend, we were at the Justice for Murdered Children event at Victoria Park to stand with those families who have been victims of violent crime or homicide, to let them know that we, together with them, in partnership with the community members, with legislation, with them being our eyes and ears, with our deputies being out there and having the right deployment, that we will help alleviate future people from being victims of homicide or any type of violent crime. Our Civilian Academy is still going on. Next week, they will be graduating another successful group of community members who've learned more about our procedures and our policy, as well as just getting more acclimated and being exposed to the daily activities of being a deputy sheriff here. As you, today unfortunately is a memorial, the 42-year anniversary of one of our deputy sheriffs, Constant Worland, who was killed in the line of duty 42 years ago. So today, our staff, you know, recognize and give honor to her and her entire family. And then unfortunately, tomorrow will be the 45th anniversary of Deputy Sheriff Walter Hannan, who was also killed in the line of duty while providing quality service to the citizens here in the City of Carson. On May 13th, our Community Relations Office and Deputy Valdez will be a judge and helping out with the City of Carson Little League. They're gonna have a banner contest, so she's gonna be one of the judges helping out with the banner contest. We will be having our memorial run on May 20th, as well as we'll be doing a Coffee with the Cop event at the Boys and Girls Club on May 24th. And then on June 6th, we're gonna be teaming up with Marathon and the Law Enforcement Torch Relay, as well as the Special Olympics, doing a little event over at Marathon off of 223rd and Wilmington. We're gonna do a little barbecue, cookout, give out some stickers, and just support the Special Olympians. So we're looking forward to that. That's all I have for my report this week. Thank you for your support by the men and women of Carson Sheriff Station. Any questions to me?
Thank you, Captain Jones. Any questions for my colleagues?
Yes, Mayor Protem. How you doing, Captain? Great report, as usual. Great to see you at all those events. Really appreciate you participating in Carson activities. It's important to the residents, important to us as well as elected officials. So you said June 6th is at the Marathon in their grass area in front of their administrative building? Is that where it is?
So we're gonna meet at the, I think, the corner at the spires.
Yes.
And then they have a couple of the Special Olympics there, Special Olympians there, and the torch, and then we're gonna go over to Marathon, just to, you know, what?
We'll walk on 223rd as a group.
Yeah, over to where they have a field area and everything and do a little barbecue and just celebrate those Special Olympians, as well as raise some funds for the Special Olympics.
Very good. What time would that start?
It's scheduled right now, the events are scheduled to start around 11:30. So those who may participate, we're always welcome, everyone, to come out. Probably if you meet around spires between 11:00, 11:30 would be appropriate time.
I see. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any of my other colleagues? Just wanna just praise you for a marvelous job. I do wanna highlight that the Carson teen that was found and the investigation continues. I know that you're not at liberty to say much about the investigation, but we just wanna make it public to our residents that the teen was found. Delay doesn't mean deny, so I'm sure her parents are happy that she's home. So we just wanna applaud you and thank you for all that you do. Thank you for the wonderful work that you put in with the city. So we're grateful, we're incredibly grateful to you.
Thank you. I'll pass your thoughts on to the team. Thank you for your support.
NPD.
Oh, sorry about that.
Yes. Captain.
I do have an inquiry for you. I did get a phone call from a constituent, and if you can research speed violations on Central Avenue, I know this is in District 1, between Delamo and Victoria. That's a long, yes, so if we could get a study on that.
That's District 1 and 3.
Oh, yes, yes.
We don't want too many high numbers, so we'll split it with two districts.
Yes, so that we can get them those numbers on speed violations in that area. I know we're having cameras come in and license plate readers, but for now, if you could get those numbers and then give it to our public safety, and then we could respond back to our constituent regarding that.
Will do, ma'am. And then in the interim, if you would like to advise the constituent, that is an area with the help of Councilman Hicks that we have specifically been providing targeted issues. We put out some of the mobile cameras on the trailers and different things, so just you can let them know that also.
Perfect, perfect. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Madam Mayor, just thank you, Captain, for what you guys do. My question, based upon that, to look at our left-hand turning signal at the corner of University and Central Avenue, we were supposed to be putting in a light for left-hand turning. Just wanted to make sure that that's still on the radar. You know that one of the residents in the area was killed on a motorcycle because of a person making a left-hand turn in front of him by coming down the street. So again, just trying to make sure we get that back on the radar, that we do get that left-hand turning signal at that location.
Everybody have a good evening.
Thank you. Is Captain Bennett here? Oh, someone in lieu of, thank you.
LA County Fire Department.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Manager, City Council. My name is Battalion Chief Michael Velazquez. I am here for Chief Bennett tonight in this place. So I'd like to go over a couple of items. So for the month of April, the City of Carson, we had 865 911 calls to the County Fire Dispatch Center. Of those 865, we had 654 EMS rescue calls, which makes up 75% of all 911 calls to our dispatch center. And also in the month of April, we had 22 calls for structural fires. Of the 22, we only had one incident where we had a loss of housing, loss of damage to a building, monetary issues. And that was on April 18th at 315 220th Street in Carson. It was an apartment house, but the fire was only contained to the garage area. So we were able to contain the fire to the garage. It was a loss of $110,000, but we saved $1.5 million of the apartment house itself by aggressive offensive attack. So I'd like to acknowledge that. So that's it for stats. I also want to acknowledge on May 6th, this Saturday, is open house for LA County Fire Department. So it's open to the public of all residents of Carson to come between hours at 10 and 5. And to visit the station, bring family, bring kids. We're open to everybody, and we're here to educate and all that. And that's the end of my report. Is there any questions on what I just presented?
Any questions for my colleagues?
Madam Mayor, I did have a question in regards, was one of those fires that was calling for, at Mills Park?
At what park?
Mills Park.
I did not get that report on Mills Park.
You didn't get their report. Madam Mayor, to the staff, I wanted to find out where we at with our cameras, because there was an incident that did take place at Mills Park in District 3. We're not knowing whether if it was a homeless person or whatever took place, but there was a fire and that there was damage to the building, and I just need to make sure that we have something in place that we're able to monitor what goes on in our parks. And I know that we discussed about putting these cameras. I just need to know the expected time that they would actually be put in, and so we don't have no eyes to know what's going on.
Yes, thank you, council member. So the cameras in the parks project actually is underway, and actually Mills Park is the first park that's actually gonna have cameras. Spoke with the IT manager as of yesterday, actually, and so they're anticipating that in about two weeks, those will be implemented throughout the entire park. And so that's the beginning of the project, and then it's gonna move forward to each park there for after.
All right, thanks.
I think because we get the report, it probably did not meet our 220 criteria for reporting a fire on our end. Outdoor fire.
As an outdoor fire, or based upon a structure, because it was next to the actual structure of the building?
Yeah, so in our report records, if it was less than $25,000 damage to the actual physical building, I probably would not get that report.
Okay.
I have a comment, Madam Mayor.
Thank you.
I wanted to thank you for the report and to Chief Bennett as well. And, you know, we're really happy that you are such an efficient and excellent fire prevention and paramedic rescue department for our City of Carson. We're really happy that these 26 calls for structural fires, only one was damaged so severely. That means that you got there in time at the other locations, so we appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And I just want to acknowledge LA County Fire Department is a proud server of the City of Carson.
Yes.
I know we've been here for years, and we appreciate the citizens and the members of the city. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Next. Item number 11, update on Public Works City Projects.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We're actually gonna be hearing from our Director of Public Works. He's gonna be providing a brief update and presentation. Looks like we also have staff to back him up in case he gets peppered with questions. So they're ready to answer if you have those questions as well. But I will turn that over to our Public Works Director, Mr. Arlington Rogers, pre-doctor, Arlington Rogers.
Thank you, City Manager Roberts. I appreciate it.
I appreciate it. Good evening, Mayor. Oh, I gotta wait till my slideshow shows up. Mr. Ernie is gonna walk me through that, I think. Good evening, Mayor. Mayor Protem, Councilmembers. The Public Works Department wants to thank you for affording us this time to update you with our efforts in providing service to the residents of the city of Carson. With this brief presentation, we will address three areas of interest. Park maintenance, landscape, median maintenance, and pothole repairs. Bless you.
Bless you.
This season, we experienced unprecedented amounts of rainfall. The combination of the rainfall and the amount of deferred maintenance needing to be completed, the Public Works team did some staffing realignments to mitigate the amount of work. We combined the signs and paint crew with the roadway crew to double the pothole repair effort. And by doing so, we were able to accomplish two things. One was we were able to close a hundred-and-fifty-six pothole requests. And the other was the realignment enabled the team to send supervisors out to be more proactive in reporting some of the potholes that had not been accounted for. These numbers are from March. I use the number March because that's when I got here. So, so from March up until this morning, we were able to close a hundred-and-fifty-six pothole requests. The reason why you see the number eight of open is because what staff was accustomed to doing was just getting out there and making the changes and making the repairs and not necessarily all the time taking the time out to put a work order in so we could track it quantifiably. So, going forward, all requests will be quantifiable because we will put it in a work order system. The next slide, we wanted to offer the viewing audience a little bit of education. We wanted to provide a little education for the viewing residents. Potholes form naturally due to many elemental forces in action. Typically, potholes develop when moisture permeates the paved surface or when the groundwater, or when the groundwater beneath the pavement penetrates the paved surface. The heating up and cooling down of the water triggers the surface to expand and contract, causing weakness to the pavement and with the added pressure. An effective pavement management system includes an aggressive crack and slurry seal, seal coating program and working in concert with our pavement rehabilitation, which you'll see at a later council meeting. And our CIP program prevents things like that. This is just some slides to show you how active our crews are out there taking care of business. You can see one pothole that has not been taken care of and then several areas throughout the city to demonstrate the effectiveness of our team. Wanted to pop this slide in and give you guys a reference, a frame of reference that in the coming weeks, we will do a comprehensive CIP demonstration. And as you can see, we have potential, we have CIP projects in every single ward, links of street, traffic, and yes, that is on the radar, Councilmember Hicks. You're welcome. Our landscape median, on my first day, six weeks ago, seven weeks ago, it was approximately one and a half months ago, the medians was the first thing that I noticed. The city manager, Mr. Roberts, I was trailing behind him. He was taking me to my office and I was getting ready to make a left-hand turn as we were conversing. And I asked him, I said, do those, because they were in the, I think that's Avalon. So, they were in the, the right-of-way of what I thought was SCE because of the power lines. And he says, no, no, those belong to you, sir. And I'm like, okay, well, I got my word cut out for me. And it brought me to the second thing that I noticed, which was MLK. That's to be discussed at some later date in the future. So, to further complicate the matters of why we experience such bad medians is because of the torrential rainfall that we have had. The bid, we had a bid, let me back up a little bit. The reason why our medians were so bad is because we didn't have a contractor. Our contract ended in December. And since December up until March, we have not had a contractor to go out and do the medians. The rains came in, rains, weeds, water, sun, hence three-foot weeds in our medians. When I came on board, staff had already begun the process of creating an RFP to find a new median landscaped contractor. And we opened the bids on four-twenty. And we're projected to present this to the council on the sixteenth of this month. In the meantime, what we've done is we've secured a temporary contractor to come in and take care and get our medians back into a manageable state. And to date, we've done Avalon from Delamo to Elantra University, from Avalon to Wilmington. And we're currently working on Victoria from Figueroa to Central, Delamo from Wilmington to Avalon. And tomorrow, we will begin working on Avalon from Carson to the four-oh-five. And the next few slides are gonna show you. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So, next slides are gonna just be some work that is currently being done to show you that the crews are out there working. Some before and after shots. And this is the goal of the Public Works team, to get our medians to look like this. And that's what's gonna be the topic of discussion with our new contractor, to have our medians landscaped and maintained to an aesthetically pleasing sight and manicured. So, those will be the discussions we will have with the upcoming contractor. Another thing that was tasked for us was our park maintenance, to get that up to speed as well. Since January of this year, where we were able to log these, we've done sixty-four landscape-related, completed work orders, twenty-one custodial-related, three-hundred-and-forty-eight graffiti, three-ninety-six from internal, and two-hundred-and-twenty-eight tree-related. Some of the ongoing things that we're doing, we're working with the Parks Department to replace all the scoreboards next year. In the short term, what's gonna happen is they're gonna use temporary scoreboards. And next year, we are on schedule to replace all scoreboards in all the parks. And we're already replacing all the base pegs in all the baseball parks and we're already replacing broken and missing playground components. Projects that we have in process right now at Dominguez Park, pool and deck replastering. It's just about complete. We have some finishing touches. The same thing with Foycia Park, replastering the pool, resurfacing the deck. Mills Park, crews are installing a new driveway at Prieston and Diamonddale.
Priestown.
Priestown? Priestown and Diamonddale. The importance of that, you'll see that during the Juneteenth event because they won't hop over the curb. There'll be a driveway right there where they can drive up place to the stage. Callas Park, there's two projects happening there, re-roofing the park facility and upgrading the field lighting. Veterans Park, there's gonna be a new digital marquee sign that will light up the whole neighborhood, is what I'm told. Hemming Way, we're converting that into pickleball courts and replace, replastering the pool and the decks. And at Carriage Crest Park, we're reseating the outfield and in the process of establishing a dog park. And these are some of the projects that we've, that staff has already done.
The director?
Yes, ma'am.
On Hemming Way Park, I was passing by there the other day. The pool, the slides, they need painting.
I'm sorry, Mayor, they need painting?
Yeah, the slides and the, the aquatic center. The drive-by, you'll see what I'm talking about. It's just faded out and it needs some attention.
We will make sure we get that taken care of.
Thank you.
You're welcome. As you can see, we researched for some gems. There's the reseating project happening right now. The grass is already starting to grow, starting to look really well. And there's the resurfacing of the pool at Hemming Way. Our accomplishments thus far is that we've done a e-waste event just recently. Mayor, thank you for attending. And in that e-waste event, we also did document shredding and we did bulky item pickup. Our document shredding resulted in eleven-point-eight tons. Our bulky items was fourteen tons. Our e-waste recovered was eleven tons. We had over seven-hundred residents participate, including our mayor. The goal for the Department of Public Works is we wanna just do our part and make Carson a premier destination city. And our action plan to get there is to engage and empower the Public Works employees to increase productivity and community satisfaction. Any questions?
Yes, one of my residents is sitting over there. Did you forget about Stevenson? Stevenson Park. The gem, I think, has been. This gem is being resurfaced. Right.
I, we probably just didn't have that in my presentation. We hit the highlights.
You did the highlights.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
It's my story.
That's your, that's a good story.
You're welcome.
Well, first of all, let me say in how, six weeks?
Yes, ma'am.
You have done a lot in six weeks.
I have not. That's my team.
Your team?
My team has done a lot.
Team has been re-energized, re-motivated, and we can get our city back the way it's supposed to look because there's a lot of deferred maintenance.
Yes, ma'am.
And more deferred maintenance costs the city more money. So, I just wanna commend you and your team.
Thank you.
For what you've done in six weeks. You didn't even know the city. You didn't even know how to get from one end of the city to the other.
I still have trouble.
I know. But I just wanna say thank you because it's always good to have new, fresh eyes coming in because this city council has been complaining about everything that was on that board. There is a, I think a memo that's what, a hundred pages of outstanding service requests that I keep on my desk and I can go through and cross off some of these. But it should never have gotten that way. So, I just wanna personally say job well done and I can't wait to see what the next six weeks are gonna bring.
Yes, ma'am.
Madam Mayor?
Any other questions?
That's Councilmember.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. You know, he jokingly said, but you know, when I first met him and I, first thing I asked him was about the medians and knowing when he saw the medians, he said, I'm already on top of it, Councilman. For the first six weeks that you've been here, you've been doing an outstanding job with, with your backup that you have because I know they're the A-team, I know them personally. And understanding that, the residents really wanted to see a change because they did not see anything being done. All they saw was weeds growing and nobody doing nothing. And my phone rang all the time to the point they would come and knock it on my front door at my home.
You let me know that.
So, it got to the point that something had to give and that give was you. So, I wanna say thank you for being here, continue to do what you do. I know it has not been easy because I think I've been complaining the most because I've been talking to the city manager, you both back and, even as, as recently as this past Saturday. I have a note that was supposed to be given to the board people who was actually working on the health fair of questions about some, about health. As opposed to giving somebody some information about health, they passed a note to me about the medians, the trees, parking, nothing about health, but I guess it's the health of the city. So, you hit on at least three of them on this list. One, the last one on the list, I gotta give it to code enforcement. But thank you for being, doing what you're doing because it's making it easier upon me and the rest of us on this dance.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
NPT.
Great job in six weeks. You have a great team.
Yes.
And if you need directions, David Roberts will give you a ride wherever you need to go.
All right.
But all kidding aside, so you've been able to fill positions that have been vacant.
I'm doing my best.
Right? So, how many more positions do you feel you need to fill to make a well-oiled machine, so to speak? You know, have a, a system working the way you hope it to work?
That's a great question and my honest answer is I don't know yet. In this short period of time, I haven't, due to the importance of the medians and the, and the park maintenance and all the things that I was tasked with at the beginning, I haven't really had an opportunity to kinda sit down and analyze the process flow of what my team is actually doing, who's responsible for what. It was just one of those things, let's get in, get your hands wrapped around this thing. Let's come up with some solutions and let's make some things happen. So, I think in week eight, I'll probably solve all the problems.
Is that right? Week eight? Well, you know, that's great.
This is on tape.
We as a city council, we wanna provide you the tools that you need and the personnel you need to, to do that great job. And we appreciate your six weeks here. We're looking forward to working together with you.
Thank you. And I think our city manager and the staff will be sitting now discussing just that because I know there's about twelve positions that have not been filled. Some time ago, there was thirty-two. So, we've been, staff has been marching through Georgia trying to get those positions filled. So, we want you to be successful in the next six weeks. I know you can't hire the staff then, but there will be an action plan in place. NPT.
Yes, Arlington, I just wanna commend you as well as your team. Cause I'm walking in City Hall the other day and three ladies walk up and they, they said, hey, can you point me to the person who does the medians? And we live in this particular area. And I said, well, we will, we're on it. And I know this is a portion of, is coming up on the agenda, but I also, I wanna thank the staff, but I also wanna thank Swayzer because when our staff was out there overwhelmed, I seen our staff out there rubbing their bra, trying to get all of those things. Swayzer came to the rescue. He came to rescue with our staff because you guys have park people working on medians. And it was just, just trying to tackle the whole assignment, trying to tackle six months of work in a week was commendable. And we have to either put a catch system in place where we don't allow contracts to expire or something like that. We have to put some system in place. But I, when I reached out to Swayzer, I said to Swayzer, I'm like, man, you ain't out here cutting the meetings. Oh, my contract is expired in five months ago. I'm like, what? How could that happen? So, we have to have a catch system in place to not allow a lapse or anything like that. And what you've done in these last six weeks with your team has been phenomenal to get our city back to a, a place where it appears, we want Carson to be the place that they drive to, not that they drive through. So, and I, I see it coming. So, we're grateful, we're appreciative. They're celebrating you guys all in Carson four-one-one about the medians, about the potholes being filled. These are things that they've been asking for and we're delivering on them. So, I wanna just tell you, we're incredibly grateful.
If I may, Mayor Protem, we already have put that in place.
Okay.
For the contracts.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, one other comment. You know, Figueroa Street has been torn up pretty severely by the sanitation district projects. They had two projects going on. And they're required as another government agency to make the medium back the way it was, just like they're supposed to make the street back the way it was before they dug it up. So, could you give some special attention to Figueroa Street? The people had to put up for literally years of traffic problems. There's still more traffic blockages going on in Carson Street and Figueroa, as you noticed. And that really needs to be brought back to standards. And this is an opportunity to make it better than it was.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
And if I may, our city engineer was actually just briefing me on that. So, it is on the radar, if I'm not mistaken. Yes, so we are on top of that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Okay, and to my colleague, until I acknowledge you to speak because Arlene, our councilwoman was next. So, I will acknowledge you so you can speak, but just please don't just start talking. Get the respect to your colleagues. Thank you, Arlene.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. So, thank you for everything that you have done and, and what you are doing and continuing to do. We have all the faith and confidence in you and your work. And I just, I received a, a text message with photos and it says, "On behalf of Avalon Greens, we want to thank you for your help and support to fix our sidewalks and streets." And that goes to you and your team.
Thank you.
So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, you can pay us off for all those wonderful comments.
So, thank each and every one of you. We appreciate it. Please do not, I know that you won't, do not hesitate to send us the requests. We are attempting to become a more proactive organization. Give us a few more days, I think we can accomplish that goal. I have a fantastic team. Mr. Raymond Velasco, Mr. Freddie Loza, Kenesha Pompey. Mr. Raymond Velasco, Mr. Freddie Loza, Kenesha Pompey, Therese Foycia, I always mess it up, Gilbert Marquez, and Garrett Roberts.
We will expect to see you back in six weeks.
No, you'll see me in two weeks discussing the CIP.
Awesome. But I'm talking about update on what you've done in six weeks.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you. The next is item number twelve, approval of the City Council Successor Agency Housing Authority Meeting Minutes from April eighteenth.
Who's approval?
It's been moved. Cash your vote. Any comment? Any questions?
Councilman Hicks. It's unanimous, Madam Mayor.
Yes. The next item is items thirteen through twenty-eight with exception of item nineteen for the consent calendar. We've already moved on item nineteen.
Some move.
Second.
All, any discussion? Anyone wants to pull an item?
Item twenty-four and twenty-eight.
Items twenty-four and twenty-eight.
I'll take twenty-eight off twenty-four.
Twenty-four. Okay, we're gonna approve the consent calendar with exceptions of items nineteen, which has been approved, and item twenty-four. It's been moved improperly second. Please cash your vote.
Cedric, did you pull item number twenty-eight?
I did, but I put it back.
You want it?
You want to pull it still?
I just...
Just for conversation, basically?
I just want to praise Swayzer for just being like...
That's what I was gonna do, that's why I was gonna pull it, but...
Yeah, well, yeah, let's pull it real quick.
Let's pull it, okay.
We've approved the consent calendar with the exception of item nineteen, which has been approved, and items number twenty-four and twenty-eight, which has been pulled.
Madam Mayor. It's unanimous.
Item number twenty-four, Councilman Hicks.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Wanted to have the staff to give a report in regards to the broadband assessment study and updating this entire council and the residents to know what's taking place here in the city of Carson.
Thank you, Councilmember. We have our staff, Ms. Rita Coulter, she's going to provide, who's our sustainability manager, and a brief update and presentation for this particular item, as you pulled. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor. Mayor Proton Hilton, Councilwoman Rojas, Councilmember Dear, Councilmember Hicks. Thank you for having me this evening. So we prepared a couple of slides regarding agenda item number twenty-four. It's the broadband project and it's to consider awarding a contract services agreement to Magellan Advisors for a citywide broadband assessment study. And this, this project is funded from the American Rescue Plan Act to conduct this, this assessment. The Carson team that's been assigned to this project, you have myself, you have our deputy city manager, Tariq Rahmani. He couldn't be with us today. He's, he's feeling under the weather, but he is, I know he's at home watching and he's very excited about this project. And we also have Latoya Butler, our innovation and business liaison. She, she's here in the room. And so we're just gonna talk about project goals, a little bit about the vendor that has been, has gone through the procurement process and is, is on consideration for the council tonight, as what assessing the broadband project is and an overview of the project schedule. So the project goals, essentially it's to ensure the businesses and the residents have what they need to prosper in the digital economy. We want to be able to enable effective, efficient municipal operations and create a roadmap for Carson to develop the infrastructure, use broadband, improve accessibility, and improve adoption. So following a pretty robust procurement process, the details of the procurement steps are outlined in the staff report. Magellan has been selected as the team that could deliver on the, the project goals. And their mission is really to connect every community to the digital economy so that no one is left behind and their work is gonna ensure that communities can access every opportunity that the internet has to offer so that they can thrive in the connected world. And that's just a little bit about Magellan. And they're gonna be looking at the drivers and the needs and then the constraints and potential opportunities of delivering this project. And Magellan is gonna take a broad and comprehensive and inclusive approach to assessing the broadband needs and the opportunities. And then we just have a project schedule. Over, overall, it's only gonna take about eight months for them. Only eight months. No, it's gonna be eight months to deliver this project. And you have kind of a breakdown of the different steps that are, are included in the project schedule, starting with the kickoff meeting. They're gonna be identifying the existing providers and the broadband assets. They're gonna assess the inventory, what infrastructure is in place, where we have gaps, and what, what's gonna be needed to deliver the project. They're also gonna be doing a pretty intense engagement and a needs assessment because infrastructure alone isn't gonna deliver on the digital divide. You need infrastructure and you also need, you need to, you need the community to adopt, adopt internet and, and... Okay, moving on, we're gonna, they're gonna identify the anchors, develop a gap analysis to see where we don't have infrastructure in place. They'll put together some conceptual designs and then a phase implementation plans. Business performance are also part of their scope, partner negotiations to develop and evaluate, and then they'll ultimately provide us with a report. And that really is the conclusion of the staff report.
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure that the residents understand that we are working towards getting us with a broadband and that we have the digital divide is removed, that we're able to be connected to the internet. Most communities, they always call us a disadvantaged community based upon that capabilities and other services, but we're moving this city forward to make sure we are connected to the internet. And I know with the recent pandemic, many of our students who had to go online and people who had to work from home, there was a lot of spotty areas in our community, things that needed to be addressed. So we're working to make that better because I personally had issues with AT&amp;T in that my home could never be connected. I had several new modems put in, they ran new lines, but no matter what they tried to do, it was not enough to give us the bandwidth to get the information out that needs to be done. And when you get everybody on at the same time, it is really diminishing the amount of bandwidth or stuff that can go through. So I'm just really happy for the staff and bringing this before this body and hopefully this council will approve this contract so that we can get that gap closed in. That being said, I want to award and adopt a contract services agreement with Magellan Advisor LLC for the broadband assessment study in the amount of two-hundred-and-seventeen-thousand-six-hundred dollars and authorize contingency funds in the amount of thirty-two-thousand-four-hundred to cover extra work beyond the specified and the scope of services and authorize the mayor to execute the contract following approval as informed by the city attorney. Adopt Resolution Number Two-three-dash-zero-seven-seven-A, Resolution of the City of Carson Council, Carson Council, amending the fiscal year twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three Innovative Sustainability Performance Management Department Budget for Services Agreement to Magellan Advisors LLC.
Second.
It's been moved improperly second. Any comment? Any questions?
Great presentation. It's only a comment.
Thank you. It's unanimous, Madam Mayor.
Item, you know, we bypassed all communications, so I need to give everyone, the public an opportunity to speak. So the first speaker is Jan Schaefer on item number twenty-nine.
Thank you. My name is Jan Schaefer and I'm speaking on item twenty-nine. The reason why the mayor put this on the agenda is quite perplexing. Why bring up the witch hunt that occurred eight years ago? I know it was a witch hunt because lies were told about me during that time by high-level city employees. So this is very personal to me. The lies were used in court documents to obtain restraining order against me, myself, and other upstanding residents of Carson. Back to the question of why is this coming up now? It could be because there's an election coming up. At the last council meeting, you finally allowed the vote to pass the mobile home park zoning residence. It was obvious from the attendance at that meeting that the residents see that Councilman Dear works for them. Councilman Dear has been trying for five years to get that item on the agenda. He was refused over and over again. At that meeting, when you passed the ordinance, your glowing praise and pandering to mobile home park residents such as myself was not believable and I found it insincere and insulting. It took you five years to realize that I am a wonderful, upstanding person that deserves protection? Nothing should take five years. It looked more to me that this was a, a political tactic. You saw votes getting away from you, from this large group of people. And again, nothing should take five years. Back to number twenty-nine. The smear didn't work then and it will not work now. People know, who know Councilman Jim Dear, know that this was an orchestrated character assassination. They did not believe the lies, but believed instead what they could see with their own eyes, that he works very hard to protect and improve the lives of everyone in Carson. In spite of your efforts over the years, Jim Dear is very well-liked and trusted by Carson residents. Please do not participate in this new campaign. It's obviously political. It looks petty. And if you look back at its history, it was a big waste of time, shameful, and it wasted a lot of money. So do the Christian thing and put this to rest. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Annette Gavino.
Good evening, City of Carson. I am speaking tonight regarding the item that Lula Holmes put to attack Jim Dear once again. If there is one bully in this chamber, it is the current mayor. She is nasty in the sense that she operates through intimidation. Her victims are the most vulnerable residents of Carson, the seniors. Why do I say it? Back in twenty-twenty, the now mayor knocked on door on one of the houses on Clivedon Avenue because she saw Jim Dear's sign on the front lawn. Someone opened the door and the first question she asked was, "Why do you have the sign of a white guy?" Another one happened on Wadley Avenue. She called the owner of the house on the phone and yelled at him because again, there was a sign of a white guy. Do you think that is not nasty? How did I know this? Because the owners of those two houses told us when we went back to visit them. The same incident happened to two houses on Troiton Lane. The senior citizens have said that they feared her because of the tone of her voice that was scaring them, as well as the look on her face. She can deny it a million times, but the truth is truth. I want the people of Carson to know that this item is put by Lula Davis Holmes because the election is coming next year and it is part of the smear campaign that Lula will use in the election. People already knew the truth. That is why Jim Dear won the election in twenty-eighteen and as well as last year. People know what a good man he is. Jim Dear has dedicated his life to the city of Carson. Wherever he goes in Carson, people approach him and tell him and say to him that they want him back to be the mayor again because they know that he will do a much better job than what we have now. Jim Dear has lots of positive accomplishments, but the mayor now constantly attempts to take credit for other people's work. That is nasty and dishonest. He is the opposite of her, that is why she doesn't like him. Jim Dear is always a gentleman and respectful. I am also a woman of color and I am offended that the current mayor is arrogant, disrespectful, and downright mean. That is why people call her nasty. I am just saying what the people, what other people are saying to each other. When Jim Dear brings forth transparency on an issue, the mayor gets angry and resorts to disinformation. So people of Carson, I just want you to know that Jim Dear will always be here for you and has proven to be a dedicated, honest, transparent, and accountable public servant. Lastly, he is the most consistent, reliable, and most trustworthy supporter of organized labor. Thank you.
Rick Palito. You have quite a few items.
Good eve... Good evening, Carson City Council and residents of City Carson. Rick Palito, environmentalist, activist, and longtime homeowner here in the city. I just want to give to my council folks here, if you could pass these out, Mr. City Manager. This is a, a report card on Lula Davis Holmes. I tried to give the benefit of the doubt for a few months and she just backed her old tricks, as you heard from other people earlier right now. I agree with them and concur one hundred percent. Please check out the updates on Mayor Lula Davis Holmes' past two and a half years. Note, this is my opinion and after speaking with our residents, here's my conclusion. Unfortunately, Lula, you failed. Number one, you've been too far removed from the grassroots families here in the southwest of Carson area. You continue to drag your feet in giving up proper, in giving us proper parity for public services such as the tree, one thousand trees that we asked to be planted, sidewalk repairs, which I'm glad the doctor brought up today, all this, he, he just hit right on the head with it. Sidewalk repairs, pothole repairs, medium tree beautifications, all Main Street, Figueroa, Avalon, two-twenty-thirds of Povida, they're filthy planters and they have to be relooked at, not just in the north, but here in the south. Your behavior toward me and Jim, Councilman Jim Dear during the past few years has been very nasty. Snide remarks, unprofessional racist remarks to Councilman Jim Dear, insinuating he was a monkey last year, if you recall. And also on four-four-twenty-three, you called him Dear Privileged. That has overtone and is very inappropriate. People of color take that to heart. You're being a racist by doing that, by the way. So with that said, you have to stop what you're doing and lastly, I believe you should, you should give us a apology. You should, you should be censored for disrespecting and misrepresenting our community and council staff. You owe us all an apology. I want the city manager, city attorney, I send CECs to the Attorney General's Office, the FPPC, to DA's office, county commission's office. I don't know if I have enough time to read the rest. I think I do, so I don't want to get cut off here. The worst, the worst failure of all time is making our mobile home residents suffer. They died, a few of them over the last two years in agony, waiting for this high anxiety that they had, which was long overdue for our mobile home estates ordinance reform. Why did you take so long? You did it last two weeks like that, maybe because you're in the pockets of certain developers first and maybe because you treat the, our poor elderly seniors second-class like leftovers. Therefore, I'm going to request that you adhere to the code of ethics. You refrain from attacking me, Councilman Jim Dear, and other employees, other persons because we have a recall committee ready and willing to start the process. I thought I didn't have to do this, but at this point, you give me no recourse.
Madam Mayor, that's three minutes.
Thank you. Thank you, Palito. Thank you. Next is Freddie Gomez.
Good evening, City Council, Madam Mayor. Just wanted to thank you for the privilege to be able to come and speak tonight on a concern matter to me. I don't have a fill or a whole speech to give to you. I have a concern. The concern is when we say we're honorable, I look at somebody honorable as somebody that's upright, that looks up and he honors people and respects people. I, we heard a lot about family. The unions was here. We heard about the families making wages, good wages, keeping the family intact, keeping it together. And I'm, I'm a married family man, have grandchildren, have kids, and guess what? I don't appreciate anybody talking to my wife, calling them nasty nobodies at all. As a Latino, I put my mother up here with high respect. When I see people that have banners and canopies that say honorable, Jim Dear, I don't think it's so honorable. banners and canopies that say honorable, Jim Dear, I don't think it's so honorable when he's telling somebody's wife that they're nasty. And people that support him shouldn't be supported at all, shouldn't be on the city council. So if you're, if you're a family man, I know Cedric Hicks is, Councilman Mayor Pro Tem Hilton is, ain't nobody gonna talk to his mother like that or his wife and call him nasty. Not here, not today, and not tomorrow. And forgive me. Thank you.
Thank you. Reverend Nelson.
Good evening. First off, the story, I just heard, okay, shut it off, about Jim Dear. I can recall in Stevenson Village, we were having a meeting, and Mr. Dear called every single African American in the building that they didn't have any acknowledgement of what was going on. For someone who can always lay claim to disrespect African Americans and think that it's okay, there's a problem. And when I stood up and I remember telling you, you owed everybody in the room an apology, and you turned beet red because you didn't know someone was gonna challenge you. Your attitude, your morals, they all, you don't take my picture because I will sue you.
Oh.
Because that's not right what you have.
Be my guest. You be my guest. You do that.
But for the way you behave yourself, you need some help, because you're always disrespecting African Americans.
That's a lie. That's a lie. Another liar.
Thank you. Diane Thomas.
Good afternoon, good evening to the mayor, council, to all of those who are in the audience. I am a 52-year resident in the city of Carson. I've seen a lot over a lot of years. I've seen this battle that is waging right now go on and on and on. Please be quiet behind me. We respected you. You respect the speaker. This is incredible. I want to, yes, I am a friend of Mayor Lula Davis Holmes. I have watched her ascend to the mayorship. She's only been there, this is her third year, the beginning of her third year, and we have accomplished more in the three years that she has been mayor with this current administration than has been accomplished over the past 20 years. So you want to point fingers and say who's done what. There were meetings, city council meetings that were being held under the former mayors that lasted till 2:00 and 3:00 o'clock in the morning, where residents grew tired waiting to get up and speak. We are now having meetings that are setting records for the first time in those 20 years, where these meetings are over at 8:30. I'm sure the staff appreciates that. I'm sure the other colleagues sitting on the council appreciate that. It was insane. Things have changed for the better. And so because things are changing, there's a level of jealousy that has creeped in to this administration that is beyond words. Instead of fighting and being jealous of the accomplishments, we should all be enjoying what's happening in Carson. We just went through a two-year pandemic that took a lot of cities down, and we just heard the state of the city's address announcing that we have a surplus over $80 million, never heard of in the city of Carson under any administration. And yet, we bicker about what? What are we bickering for? This makes no sense. And so you come up, and then one gets jealous of the other, and you want to call someone nasty. I watched the council meeting. I heard it. Everyone in Carson heard it. And so you can't say that that's a lie because it's on tape. You can watch it on film. So that, and don't talk while I'm talking. There is a film that shows what was said. You don't have to dispute it. You don't have to agree with it. Just look at what it says. Let's stand together in unity. Let's get this city continuing to go in the positive direction and stop all this fighting.
Thank you. We have, that's the completion of our all communications for agenda items. But because we only have one speaker, Dr. Lee, you want to speak on non-agenda.
Madam Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, this is not part of my speech, but I would like to commend the Mayor Pro Tem for bringing such an awesome sermon, spoken words at the Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Fashion Show on Sunday. He was just awesome. I didn't know you could preach like that. So I got to come to your church. And our mayor, I'd just like to say you did an outstanding job with your fashions. You were great. Awesome. But I would like to give you an update on the Women Issue Commission. We are providing food for California State University Dominguez Hills. There are many homeless students there. So each month, we donate food. We got a list of items that they need, and we have one of our members who go and do all the shopping. And the students are very appreciative of the foods that we're giving to them. Our chair, Carolyn Foster, also has a food bank at her church. So she brings meat, fresh vegetables, fruit, a lot of nice things. So we donate hygiene items, diapers, and most importantly, the food for the students of Cal State Dominguez Hills. And we do that on a monthly basis. This concludes my report.
Thank you, Doctor. And the Women's Issues Commission has done a fantastic job. So thank you very much. Now we're going to go to the pulled item, item number 28.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor. This item is due to the recent above-average rainfall medians, and were minimally maintained, which then caused overgrown weeds. To immediately address such concerns from the community, an arrangement with a local contractor was made to assist city crews with the urgent need to improve the aesthetics of the medians. Staff is recommending that the city council approve the proposed contract with Swazer Corporation at the current contract terms and at a rate not to exceed $60,000. The term of the contract will expire June 30, 2023, giving staff sufficient time toward a larger citywide maintenance contract after issuance of an RMP. That concludes staff's report for City Council, Madam Mayor.
Madam Mayor, I do want to move to approve it tonight, but I just wanted to highlight the willingness of Swazer. They had, their contract expired five months ago. When I looked at the medians and I saw that our staff was having trouble, I asked the city manager to reach out to Swazer, and within two hours, they mobilized a crew to get out there and start attacking medians. They had a whole crew within a couple of hours to knock down this, and I think this ought to be commended. They are, I believe, they are, they are Carson residents, so they take pride as if they are Carson workers themselves. And I just wanted to highlight them. Our, our staff was completely overwhelmed trying to do it themselves. But one phone call from the city manager mobilized a whole crew, and you've seen results all throughout last week. And Swazer has been a big part of it. So I'd like to make a recommendation that we award and approve the proposed contract with Swazer Corporation to provide median landscaping services in the amount not to exceed $60,000.
I second the motion.
Any questions? It's been moved and properly second. Hearing none, let's cast your vote.
Unanimous, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Item number 29, we've already addressed it. We've heard from public comments to the city staff. At the next council meeting, I'd like that resolution on the agenda, the one that I just handed our assistant city manager. So now we will move to item number 30. Consider local uncontested appointments for the Public Works Youth Commission. We finished that one, right?
Yes, we did, Madam Mayor. And it's all been handled, and the, sorry, the staff has been making contact with each youth commissioner. Because of their age and the era of digitization, most of them prefer text or email. So we're working on that.
Okay, thank you, thank you, thank you. And for the other commission, Public Works, is it possible, I think last time I couldn't appoint Marion.
As of today, you are eligible to make the appointment. The 10-day, 10 days have elapsed.
Okay. So I would like to appoint Marion Martin and to take Chike Nwueke from the third alternate to the first. I think last time we appointed Clarence Johnson, right? So Marion Martin and move Chike to the alternate number one for the Public Works Commission.
I will get Chike's spelling from you at a later date.
Madam Mayor, is that an uncontested appointment?
No, my uncontested appointment is...
That being the case, I'll make a motion to approve your appointment with the ratification of the city council.
Thank you. My uncontested is, I think it's Fernandez, Jack Fernandez, I want to say.
Okay, I can confirm.
Okay, it's been moved and properly second. Could you please cast your vote?
Unanimous.
The next on the agenda is item number, is it 31? Second reading of an ordinance number 232303, amending section 9113.2 overlay districts and adding section 9133.4 MHP overlay district conditionally permitted use of part one introduction of chapter one zoning of article nine, planning and zoning of the Carson Municipal Code related to establishing a mobile home park overlay for the overlay district. I'd like to move for approval of that.
Second to motion.
Yes.
Sorry, I just, for a point of clarification, we're just adding and adopt ordinance number.
Okay. Adding and adopt, just for the...
Yes, everything else is the same. That's the only change.
It's been moved and properly second with the additions made by our city clerk. Any conversation? Hearing none, cast your vote.
The voting board needs to be adjusted.
That's good.
Unanimous, Madam Mayor.
Okay, I have all communications for matters not listed. Councilmember requests to add items.
Any memorial adjournments?
Thank you. We have memorial adjournments?
Yes, I am wheeling and dealing up here. Okay, Madam Mayor. These are the names that I received. And just for clarification, this is an updated list, which was sent a little bit after the start of the meeting, but everyone should have a copy of this. Kendall Rodney Sparks, Lemwell Rivera Guyab, Christina Santino Lopez, Mildred Maxine Dunlap, Ava LaChey Hamilton.
Anyone have an additional? Hearing none, I'll have our bishop give us a quick prayer.
Yes, ma'am. I do want to highlight Ava LaChey Hamilton. She was the CEO and director of Angels for Sight, and she partnered with us, with the city of Carson, with a number of cities, and made sure that those people who could not afford glasses were able to have glasses. So she was a staple, as well as all those people who were. Father, we pray that you would comfort these families, you would comfort their communities, and we pray that you would just bless them. Thank you for their life and their legacy. In Jesus' name, I pray. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, thank you. The next on the agenda is, we've covered the council member's request to add items to future agendas.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I would like to add an update for the county library on Carson Street. There's a number of constituents that are concerned, and I don't know if we have to add it on the agenda, or if we could direct the city manager to send a letter for an official update. People, it's in Carson, and people just feel as we should know more, which we should. However, that is a county facility which we don't run. And if you look at the website, it just says opening soon, but soon has been years. So we want to, I get tagged every day just on Facebook about that, so.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. If I can, I'll have our Director of Community Development, Mr. Said Nasay, just give a brief update. He was able to get some information from the county regarding that, that request. But we will bring that as requested, so the letter. But Mr. Nasay?
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Madam Mayor, yes, we've been in contact with the county library and Deftolos. The Carson facility has gone through extensive renovation already, and they, they were actually ready to open it, but they realized that there were some additional extensive repairs. The roof needed to be done, in addition to some other improvements. So the latest date that we have right now is fall opening for the Carson Library, and that's the latest information as of like a couple of weeks ago.
Thank you. Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Yes, I did have a request. Since we've been talking about the medians and the street repairs, my concern is Caltrans and all of the Caltrans right-of-ways in our city. They, I mean, we're doing our part. That's a mirror, and most people don't know the difference. All they know is that it's weeds, it's overgrown, it looks bad. So can Caltrans bring us a report back, or can staff look into what is the next step in getting Caltrans to clean up the area?
Thank you, councilmember. So yes, our Director of Public Works can give you a quick update as to that ask as well, because that was part of the update and kind of some of the tasks that he was looking into. But I'll allow Mr. Doctor Rogers to share that information.
Where we're at with the Caltrans right now, I have a meeting scheduled with an organization that does reentry in one of the school districts from the area where I live, and to see if we can incorporate that program here in the local area as well. We haven't had contact at Caltrans yet. I haven't been able to generate that yet, but I am working on it. But I do have a plan, active plan, as you're talking about. So it may take a little while. Caltrans is a little prickly about some of their standards, and we just want to make sure that we can accommodate them and keep the beautification going.
If I could be of any, I may have a couple of numbers, but once I make that contact, I'll give that to you.
Thank you. I'd appreciate that.
Madam Mayor?
Yes. Yes, this is directed to staff. So a while ago, I had, I was inquiring about an in-house building and safety division. So if we can get an update on that. And then the other, thank you. No, no, you're okay. The other is the Public Safety Emergency Preparedness Plan. That was another that we brought, I requested a while ago. So just a couple of updates. So if we can get that, that'd be great. Thank you.
Yes, we can provide you the update, Councilwoman Rojas. Our assistant city manager actually is kind of has the beat on that, so I'll allow him to kind of just give you a brief update along with the council, but we'll provide something informalized for the next meeting.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Councilwoman Rojas, yes, we are working on our RFP for Building Safety Services right now, and in... and intend to roll that out in the coming weeks, interfacing with our Community Development Department on some of the scope, and then also on the emergency services piece. There are some plans in the works, and we'll return with a full update on that as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Dear?
I don't have any tonight.
Okay. What I want to say is congratulations to our future doctors here. Our Assistant City Manager, our MPT. Ooh, I'm just so excited. That is awesome. That is awesome. Arlington, oh, Arlington also?
Arlington.
Oh, my goodness. Who else? A doctor's degree?
Isa Polito is in the doctoral program.
But have you received it? These people have received theirs. You're working on it? Okay, let me know when you get it.
All right.
Okay. So thank, this is awesome to have doctors among us. Our city clerk is Dr. Kalia Bradshaw. You're gonna have to make me go back to school. This masters is not working for me. And I'd also like to say that I attended the Dymaly Jazz Festival. Our MPT was part of the planning of that. He's on the board. What are you, MPT?
On the board, advisory board.
It was very well attended. They had me in the cold until 10:30 at night, but I survived. And then also, I'm excited about the fact, MPT, did you announce that the young lady was found? Okay, she was found, so that's a good thing. And we're not paying out $100,000 because Mr. City Manager, she came home on her own.
Yes, ma'am, we made sure that the language in that particular item specified the parameters in which that money would be released, and so that was what was advised from our captain. He's still, there's still some investigation that they're completing, but as far as, yes, she did come home on her own, that is the information that we've received. So yes, ma'am, the money is still sitting in the city's coffers.
Thank you. And to our residents that are listening, I'd like to thank you personally for supporting all those measures that we put on the ballot that has generated us $80 million in surplus. So, and with that $80 million, we are doing some of the things to what the residents want. We're enhancing, cleaning up our dividers, we're trimming our trees, we are doing pavement work that had been deferred for years, and we are hiring the staff to make it done, to get it done. So when you say this mayor is not doing anything, look at my state of the city. It says everything that I've done in two and a half years. So words, I just want to say thank you very much to the residents. Without you, and this, I call us the three Hs, because my counterpart over in the corner, she says, "I'm just watching the show," Arlene. But Mayor Protem, myself, and Hilton were on the council, and those measures would not have passed without the support. And they are bringing in the needed revenue because of those tax measures. The all companies, which has never been taxed before, utility user tax, and what's the other one, the K, Measure K? The sales tax.
Sales tax.
The sales tax. So that's how we're able to do what we're doing. And with a management team, I said it before, this council sets policy, and we rely on staff to implement the policy. And the policy was, we're gonna get you the revenue that you need to get the job done, because we were tired of saying, "I can't, you can't run a city with $20 million." It just won't happen. And our streets, our infrastructure, our roads are a testimony that $20 million budget, that what we relied on for years, will not get the job done. And we will have more at the end, Mr. City Manager. We will be teetering towards $160 million in surplus. So you can say I'm not doing anything, but my residents know I am. So thank you very much. Thank you for the implementation.
Cinco de Mayo. I'd like to announce Cinco de Mayo.
Oh, Cinco de Mayo.
Yeah, this weekend in District Two at Carson Park, everyone in the city of Carson and beyond is invited to our great Cinco de Mayo celebration. You'll really enjoy yourself if you attend. I look forward to seeing you there. Thank you.
Thank you. We have some more announcements that's coming up. Councilman Hicks is first, and then MPT. Did you have an announcement? You're good? We're good?
Cinco de Mayo.
Cinco de Mayo. Okay.
Thank you.
Councilman.
You ready? Okay. I just want to make for the record, it was something that happened in 2019. My daughter graduated from Carson High School and was awarded a Presidential Scholarship at Cal State University Dominguez Hills. It was a controversial award that was given because it was clouded by someone's mayor thinking that she got it because of me. My daughter got her scholarship by her own merits, by her grades and her ability to do what she needed to do for herself. I am proud to stand here and let you know that my daughter will graduate on May the 19th from Cal State University Dominguez Hills in Communication and Advertising and Public Relations minor with high honors. She is actually receiving the Presidential Medal. She's receiving the Communications Department Medal of Honor. She is also receiving her colors along with that, and her grade point average is a 3.85. And that, why she, the reason why she has two minors is because she was doing 20 units a semester, maintaining a 4.0 grade average. What ended up happening was, they told her she couldn't graduate in three years because the scholarship was for four years. So she had to stay one extra year. So within that year, she did another major, which was the Public Relations major. So that's why she has a double minor in advertising and public relations. So her graduation is on May the 19th. This coming Saturday, she's gonna be receiving from the Communications Department her Medal of Recognition. And I'm just proud of my daughter, because if you know the history of my daughter, when she was born in 2001, she came premature. She only weighed 2.2 pounds. She actually was the size of my hand, and I have a picture of her actually in my hand when she was born. And I say God is good all the time, because prayer answered prayers, and to my wife, who worked diligently with her in her development, you cannot get a better wife than what I have, and I'm very happy for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. MPT, Dr. MPT?
Yeah, Cedric, I got a great wife too. No, just kidding. But I wanted to not let this, because we won't meet again, but it's our mayor's birthday, and I just wanted to make sure we say happy birthday to our mayor. We won't meet again before her birthday, so we wanted to say happy birthday to this fearless mayor. So we wanted to just stop and wish you a happy birthday. We appreciate you, we applaud you for the work that you do. So I don't know if it's appropriate to have JR sing "Happy Birthday," or Sunny sing "Happy Birthday."
Let Lula sing to you.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you.
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday, dear Lula. Happy birthday to you.
Thank you. I'm hiring you for Saturday. So all is well, all is good, and, well, maybe I should, huh, MPT? Yeah. I'll let it go, it's sold out, you know. Okay, so thank you. We're gonna adjourn this meeting and say Happy Mother's Day to all the wonderful mothers out there. You guys are just beautiful. Happy Mother's Day also. Okay, this meeting is adjourned.